Nope.
I suppose you haven't figured it out.
I suppose that I have. And so with that, I will call this meeting of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District to order on October 28th at, I can't see the, at 5:30.
2:00.
2:00 PM. This is Wendy Singleton, Vice Chair, presiding. Present, we have Commissioners Pierce Hoffmeyer and Holly, Commissioner, and Chairman Merrill is, and we believe will not be present. So, the first item, the first order, or item on the order of business is the review of the 2015 Agenda revisions.
Budget.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. 2015 budget revisions. Thank you. Sorry, thank you. And so, we, what we have in front of us is, let's see. Do we have, so is, so, sorry. Can, can, okay. And are there revisions to, sorry, this is what I was trying to ascertain, is are there revisions in this document? So, the horizontal document, or what do we call that, landscape document? There are revisions to the budget numbers there? Okay. Sorry. Just trying to make sure I know what we're, what we're looking at and going through. All right. And so, would one of you ladies like to walk us through this? Or do you want us, how do we want to go about this? Would you like to highlight the changes?
Sure.
Okay. I don't know if that's, I mean, I guess I can, I can try to do that as well.
I do not have a copy of the old one.
You got it there?
Basically, Erica went through it with us, and we made adjustments and things, starting with revenue, some things that we knew were probably going to have to come down a little bit on. And then, with revenue, a lot of the things, we really left kind of where they are, as far as daily admission. We think we'll probably go over that. Same thing with birthday parties, passes, the punch cards. We're hoping that with our marketing campaign for holiday stuff, gift purchases, that we can come closer to the target number. So, we did not make an adjustment to those yet. Clearly, when you go through it, there's still a lot of things that we will have to adjust as we continue working on it.
And so, you didn't adjust kayak lessons?
Correct.
Okay.
The revenue is adjusted. So, just to back up for one second, so this is as of, as of what date? This is as of October 15?
For income, this is actually going to be as of September 30. For expenses, it will be as of October 15.
Okay. Then, the previous one that with, that we got a week ago, what was that through? Because these are different.
So, that one would have been through the end of September.
That, those are, this, this isn't, I'm not trying to trick you. That's what she just said this one was. So.
This one must have been the end of the previous month, like August.
Well, let.
January through September 15, January through October 15, 15. Is that what we're trying to figure out?
You know, certain things are headers, and, and so, I don't want to, I don't want to misinterpret it. The reason I'm asking is, for example, so to Donna Sue's point, the kayak lesson revenue on the one from the 23rd was.
You're right.
Was $36.90, and now it's $55.90. And, and so.
Were you receiving that from Skagit? In the first quarter?
I can print the detail of it. I don't remember if I.
What that possibly would be, since she doesn't remember for certain, with the income, if it happens to point of sale at the front, I enter that in. So, I have a certainty if it's income from point of sale at the front, it has not been entered for October yet, this would have been an item that would have been invoiced out to the college. If that invoice came in, the payment came in for that, she would have processed that. So, that could be why there is the difference.
For the kayak, I know for sure from Skagit Valley, we, I billed them out for five classes, and I received payment for three classes. So, the last bill that I sent for two classes was October 7th, and they're on net 30. So, they're, probably won't see a check from them until next month.
And, and I think, part of why I'm trying to clarify what it is we're looking at, and why it's different, is, is understanding, you know, are there, are there numbers that we should be, so if we were looking at, at this one from the 23rd, that we thought was as of September 30th, and looking at that as a 75%, it's, it's a little, I mean, we can, we can use that one as a reference point, still, I just am a little concerned about differences in us knowing what we're looking at.
Can I go look at this, look at the details? And then, can see.
You, you can, but if, if really, maybe, maybe the better item here is, okay, so, so for one, stating that what we're looking at is real time whatever's been posted, right? I mean, okay. So, just to clarify that for anyone who might be looking at it, including ourselves. But, but that we're going to use, since this one that's dated the 23rd, that's the one that we were given before. That one was as of September 30, correct? Okay. So, so that's really the basis that we were trying to make decisions on, and that's the one we should still, to a certain extent, be using. But comparing the budget column, I'm not trying to be oversimplistic here, I'm just trying to make sure everybody's on the same page.
There are also some things that may end up being a little bit different when you're looking at that, because we have continued fine tuning on chart of accounts and item placement. So, I know that that probably will create some discrepancies as we go through it.
And, and in this case, I think I'm just pointing it out, because honestly, Joanne, we could have you run in there and look at this one, but then, if the next one's, like, it's just one of those things, let's just use that, the copy from the 23rd as the basis. And then, if we really need to, you know, if we, if we have questions, I appreciate you wanting to do that. I'm just not sure that it's going to help this discussion. So, so, I think we value your time otherwise here. So, thank you. So, let's see. So, I'm looking through, so if I go through, if I go through 310, which is levies, I don't see anything that's changed. If I go through, so there is a new section, just to be articulate about this, carryover, that's a new section, and that includes, well, and so, it's broken out, rather, it's, it's actually intergovern, intergovern, sorry, carryover was just an additional, it kind of looks like a hanging Chad right now, but I'm sure it's.
Yeah, I don't know why you did that.
Okay. 330.00, intergovernment revenue, and that looks like that's starting to be fleshed out. So, that, but that is, things moving around a little bit. 340 JVMP revenue, I don't see any target numbers that have changed there.
I think it's going to be mostly in expenses, where you're going to see things chipped around a little bit. Pretty sure that's what.
Okay. Okay. All right. I'm just still going to go through, I mean, the expectation is as if that we're falling short on revenue, that we have to make changes. That's the law.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Were you comparing these to see if, if the one from the 23rd, the one from today, if there's any difference?
In the budget. Because that's what we asked for the changes. There should be updates to the budget.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, the budget numbers.
So, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just calling.
Okay, got you, the budget numbers.
Correct. Yes.
When she said target, that's what she was talking about.
Sorry, sorry.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for, yeah. The, see, it's right in front of me. The, the budget column is, is what I'm comparing. So, let's see here.
Have we seen a great deal of, talking about the, the punch cards, and you said you're going to advertise and try and get, is that something that we see people buy a lot of for holidays?
It is something that I've noticed in the two years that I've been here through the holiday season, that we have a fair number of people come in that are purchasing them for gifts.
And you think that's going to make up for 40% of the people that haven't bought their punch cards yet?
We were still kind of batting that around a little bit. I would say that I have not seen us specifically market for that before, which we intend to do this year. So, it will increase. I don't know how much it's going to increase. I know that at the end of 2013, when people found out that our fees were going to increase for 2014, that we had people coming in, especially the last couple of weeks of the year.
I would, I would think because of that, we'll see.
So, I think the combination of those two things, that's, we were still batting around for, you know, exactly where we wanted to go with that number.
Okay. So, I've, I've just gone through while that was happening, I was listening to that, but softly, but through 347.30, or the total, sorry, three, so the total of 340.00 and 350.00, 360, 361, 362, and 360, 367, and 369, nothing has changed. I'm just trying to determine if there's anything that we need to.
I know we have it penciled in to change the running club dues to match what they have actually grown in. I don't know why it did not get changed on here, but I know we have it penciled in. So, this, but this amount needs to be changed. So, under 350 running club dues, it should actually be going down to the 726.60, because we will not bring in any more revenue for that this year?
Right. Yes.
And I know we have it penciled in at some point.
So, from the revenue perspective, nothing has, has yet changed.
I know that we were penciling around with a new number for the in-luck dues, trying to get a little clearer perspective on what the true average level is right now, so that we have an accurate number when we do plug it.
I think the thing for us is just that we can't, we can't move forward without that.
Well, and some of it is that, we definitely had time constraints over the last five days working on this stuff. You've had three of us at different points, very ill, and doing what we can. Two of us were heavily involved with the swim meet over the weekend, and we've had so many hours in the day. So, there definitely are still holes that we're working on plugging and numbers we're working on calculating.
Yeah. No, absolutely understand and hope everyone is doing well. The thing is, is just to kind of reiterate from the last meeting, it's, it's a legal requirement for us, if we know that our revenue is shortfalling, it is a legal requirement for us to adjust our budget.
Absolutely. And we're working diligently.
Right. And I'm not saying that, I'm certainly not saying that anyone isn't, I'm just, I'm just making clear that that is the requirement that we're trying to meet here. And I think we all feel a sense of responsibility to that. I'm not, certainly not saying that anyone doesn't. And then, for, if, if revenue exceeds anywhere that the budget, the, the board has to vote to adjust the budget for any over, over expenses as well, overages in the expense category. So, again, I'm just trying to define the activity.
Honestly, I mean, it's a lot to ask you guys to do this. You know, this is a director's job to put together this budget, not you two's job to do this. You've been in, put in a precarious situation, and we're trying to be very patient. And at the same time, I definitely understand what you're saying, you know, and please don't let this overwhelm you, because it really isn't your job to put together a budget. It is a director's position. That's the director's job. Thank you.
So, for expenses, let's see what we have here.
Before we jump onto expenses and stuff, if I do got questions, I don't remember if we talked about it or not, but with this here, from what I sit there and see, under 362, under rents and concessions, the high school is 200% over budget.
We, we talked about that, remember? It's because they paid, they didn't get billed for last fall, and they, so they finally got billed at the beginning of the year, and that's why we got extra money this year. It's paying for 2014 use.
When Director Wolf was leaving, there was a lot of confusion with an admin assistant, and things didn't get billed.
Okay. So, we're still 200% over budget.
Well, it's, that's revenue.
That's revenue. And so, it's, they, we actually got more money. It's a good thing.
Well, I'm talking about exactly how it's worded here. The last column says percent of budget.
Right.
200 is 200% for the budget.
Yeah. Which is revenue.
Well, it's 200% of the budget, so we, we got a double, we got two payments.
We got more money.
Right.
I understand, but the way this here.
Right.
Okay, hold it, hold it.
It needs to be adjusted, and we got this budget.
Well, it shouldn't be, it actually shouldn't be, in that, in that case.
You're actually correct.
It shouldn't be adjusted, because we weren't expecting double. Right. So, in that case, that's one that, I mean, we, by the way, we can always make more than we said and not have to do anything about it. We just can't make less and not adjust for it. I mean, ideally, it's going to be balanced, one where, you know, it's going to be balanced regardless, but we can, we can always make more.
Mine is better.
Mine is better.
Okay.
Some of these numbers on the income side, like, you know, the daily admission, of course, we know we're going to exceed what the budget amount was. And so, we have a little better idea, we don't want to make a new number that overestimates that. So, we're doing some number crunching, especially since we can't say, you know, we have 500 people that come through the door at 350 per person. There are so many variables with the different agreements we have out there, that we need a little more time to crunch those numbers to get a solid number, rather than just a shot in the dark.
And so, maybe what we can, maybe, maybe part of the value of this activity is, let's go through what things have changed, but then, what we can also do then, is try to set what we think the right timeline is, to, to make sure that, that we're doing value-added activities. Meaning that you guys have had the time to do, you and whomever else, you know, but that everyone's had the time to do what they need to do, and that, so that we're not just pulling you in and asking you questions, when you're like, yep, I know, still have to do it. Because I know that isn't a good use of your time either. Right? I'm sure that there are other things that are more valuable that you could be doing. So, let's see. So, 576, 576.20.10. So, there, it looks like cashiers, that number was actually, that number actually went up in terms of the budget numbers.
Yes.
Admin assistant, that number went up.
I think she increased the.
Correct. Yep. Kayak went up. Wait, I think I'm missing something here. Sorry. 210.
Yeah, we know that number quite a lot.
Now, private lessons, was that, sorry, I'm, I don't know if I'm looking at the wrong. Okay. Thank you. Running coach went up. Special events went down.
And it went down, down.
Lifeguards went up significantly. Senior lifeguards.
And the combined total of those two, they went down slightly.
Okay. Okay. So, assistant coach moved to deck coach, and then, assistant coach moved to deck coach. But it's a wash. Team admin went down. Pool operator went down. Janitorial staff, what's that? Went up. And it looks like, so for this section, I'm not going to, I'm not going to do all the math, but for this section, we have a net gain in expenses of $15,362.
You looking at salary wages?
Correct. Yeah.
Are you comparing it to the last one we were given?
Yes.
It would be $27,000, isn't it? It's 361, it's 388 now. Is that right?
481 and 486.
471.
Oh, excuse me. 471.
She's looking at budget only, not what we've spent, but the budget.
Yeah.
I'm lost.
Well, the, the idea here is that we're, in certain cases, we're exceeding revenue on items, and in other cases, we are short on revenue. And, and so, at, at a certain point, we have to, this budget has to be balanced.
I totally understand that.
Okay.
It's just trying to follow the path you've taken, and I'm okay.
It's, we have to look at the, we have to look at the, the budget has to be adjusted.
Wendy, I realize the budget needs adjusted.
Okay.
I'm just trying to follow you, that's all. There's no, 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 no tension here. I'm just trying to follow you, because you're leading the meeting, I'm just trying to follow you, that's all.
And, and all I'm doing is going through the column.
That's fine.
Yeah. And trying to see where we.
That is fine.
And I'm going to finish my statement, and see where adjustments have been made. I'm, I'm trying to make sure that, that the process is clear. I apologize, I didn't mean to leave anybody out of the process.
Let me protect you.
There isn't any.
$1,800 come for the deck coaches. We asked, I asked that question the last time, I just wanted to, we never got an answer, but it was, it's still in there as, that's what we paid, so.
That is what we paid.
And, okay.
So, I think, I think that the original question was based on, we, we put in the budget what we thought were actuals, and I think that's, right, that's.
And, and we said, and no more, and then, $1,800 since then have been paid.
I'm just curious.
This is the detailed part.
Okay.
And we did get from the line coach, her timesheets from the days that she had not turned in previously.
Okay.
Those will process on this next payroll.
Okay. And then, the budget needs to be adjusted to.
To meet that.
To meet that. And then, the monies needs to be found somewhere else.
So, so, looking at these dates, so, just to close the loop on that particular item, that, the, the number we took didn't have confidence in it. I mean, if you look at the dates that those hours were claimed, so, it was, it was unfortunate, but we were, but it was off. I mean, that's, there wasn't, there wasn't some huge surprise. It was a, either a typo or miscalculation.
She definitely did not work a bunch more hours after that.
Right. Right. Thank you. So, if we look through, if we look through payroll benefits, so that's section 576.20.11. Is that where I was? Sorry, I, I, it feels like comparing apples and oranges, I know it's not, but.
Isn't the pool operator, isn't that Matt, or is that Matt and Stephanie?
Matt and Stephanie.
And how can we decrease the budgeted amount for them?
She is not salaried.
Ah, so you're going to take, okay.
And on the payroll benefits, retirement, so our coach has not contributed anything to retirement.
Okay.
So, that's 1645, most likely we will be able to, this is going to lead to something else. I think Erica was going to have a conversation with him and see where he was at with that before we moved it.
Okay.
That, and we, I think we've talked about it, where it's like, we have to leave it there, because he should be able to make his.
You know what, though? It should, we could do it like the government is, you have, you can't just decide in July to do it. You have to decide, you have open seasons, you know? Because we have a budget to figure out.
That's true.
And you should, you should have to commit to that. You're going to do it in January, you're, you're not going to do it for the whole year.
And so, that would be, that would be a policy change, right? So, that would be something we would talk about for next year.
And if you leave at the end of the year, if he hasn't contributed at all, then that money becomes free, because he gets to go back and backdate his contributions. It's just, we don't know yet.
I keep losing my place. Sorry about that. All right. So, vacation, well, there's, yeah, this is all part of the salary in terms of the, the budget numbers for this year. So, there are no changes there. Payroll taxes, it looks like that number went down a little bit, again, in terms of
Was that something that the, the numbers justify decreasing, or?
Just based on.
Where we are right now.
And, and last, I looked at last year's, last, the end of, last few months of last year.
So, as far as 576.20.20 personnel benefits, it looks like medical, was medical moved? Sorry.
Yes, medical was moved.
Okay. From.
I think it's salary and wages for summer.
Okay. So, it was 23.5, and it has been reduced to 17.040.
Was that based on the fact that we haven't hired a director?
Yeah.
Because there was savings we had there.
All right. So, five, so, excuse me, 576.20.30 minor purchases, that has, has that gone down? Has that? It looks like there have been a number of changes here. Office supplies has come down. Food for human consumption has come down. Sorry, I'm, I'm, I apologize if I'm all over the place, but I'm trying to reconcile here a little bit. First aid supplies has come down. Cleaning and sanitation is the same. Aerobic supplies has come down. And retail expense, sorry, was that here for? Where did that move from?
Right now, on the, on the old one, I believe it was under cost of goods sold. They moved that and concessions, just to recognize them as expenses immediately.
So, we've moved the budget, but we haven't actually moved the expenses. Because we still have cost of goods, we have. Cause we still have cost of goods, we have, um, retail snacks, retail and snacks.
So part of the issue with this may be that, uh, I think if you go back and look in the first page, or no, one page, three.
Page three.
Page five, sorry. Page five of the, no?
Page four.
Page four, yep, it's up there.
Page four, cost of goods sold.
It, it still shows the over budget and the budget items there for the retail and the snacks, and it also shows it as a budget item over here. Part of the reason that happened is because we exported this to an Excel document to make these changes, so that I did not physically change anything that would affect the P and L until a revision is approved.
Got it, so it's a logistical, yeah.
It's a, I don't want to mess up the P and L until you guys have approved a change.
Absolutely, uh, duly noted and understood and supported. Understood, okay, so, so what we established for, for that retail, um, retail expense is that it still shows in cost of goods sold and so it should be taken out of there.
As a cost of goods sold.
Okay. All right, and, okay, thank you.
So it's, it's proper places, cost of goods sold, yes, is that what you just said?
No.
We're moving it to...
From cost of goods sold.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so overall, twenty dot thirty-one, that has gone down a, a little bit. Even adding something new in there. So there. So that's actually considerable. Let's see, so swim, swim meet, the software went up based on the price of Team Unify. Um, it looks like that's the only change in that section, twenty thirty-two.
We do believe that the meet host expense will be coming down, probably cutting about in half, we're just waiting for everything to finalize for the meet before you actually make the change.
Cool. Great, wonderful. Vehicle maintenance, that came down considerably. Um, let's see, twenty... Twenty thirty-five. Twenty thirty-five went up. Do you know why that went up? I, if we've talked about it for last Friday, I'm sorry.
To reflect the purchase of the, my name, the driver name for our...
Kaiak equipment was adjusted to reflect actuals, cool. All right, so minor purchase, same, so if we move on to, let's see, I keep, I'm trying to make sure I'm on the right page here. Five seventy-six dot twenty dot forty, other services. IT monthly came down by almost a thousand dollars.
So that's what our monthly fee is for the rest of the year, is that?
Um, point of sale system went up by about five hundred dollars. Um, background checks went up. Credit card processing went down. Um, accounting went, came down to actuals, thank you. Um, aerobic instructors, is this, I'm guessing this is a, a wild Chad in here, or...
I feel like it, I don't know why that would be there.
Okay, Max, um, we'll just...
That's so, that's just so random.
Cause alphabetically, it's the, it's probably the next thing.
But did we lose something somewhere else? I hope, I hope not. No, I don't think we did.
I, I think it's because it was exported to...
Okay. Okay. It's testing us to see if we're paying attention, or something like that. Alarm monitoring, well, now, okay.
I know fun had a question last week, he wanted to find out why this is so high and this is, in the back has the, um, copy of the fire test that we were billed for and also on the front is the details.
Okay.
Okay, but you went down, but we already spent actual way more than that anyway. You have to, you have to make the budget reflect the actual.
It's, so, eh, that's, that's why I was laughing, was just, yeah, so we just know it needs to be adjusted. Yeah, no, that was just kind of the like, if we pretend like we didn't spend that much, maybe we really did. Nope, still did. Um, I thank you, Joanne, for providing this detail. I would be lying if I said it wasn't lost on me a little bit, but if anyone else would like to look at it, um, I, sure, sure, I, I, I think it may be more meaningful to Sean, given his area of expertise.
I'll tell you, though, it doesn't explain why it costs, how much was that particular...
The fire test is on there. Um, what, what it is is the Evergreen, Evergreen comes and checks all our...
Right.
Wirings and fire launches.
Once a year.
Once a year. And then the fire department comes in here and inspects that it's, we've actually been inspected.
No, the fire department doesn't charge anything.
No.
No, they're just here to come and make sure that we are being inspected by our...
Evergreen charged us over a thousand dollars to do that?
No, 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 no. It's, the fire test is one something, but we've had two, um, after-hours emergency regarding the alarm system that they had to...
Respond to?
Respond to.
And we get charged for that?
Yeah, you do.
How much?
Uh, I, I believe... Two hundred fifty for one or two.
Two times after-hour emergency service, two hundred and fifty dollars. So there you go, must be a hundred and twenty-five dollars per time.
When, when was that done? Cause I mean, that's something that we should be checking.
Twenty-nine, twenty-fifteen is, yeah.
That should have been brought up back then.
So that's two hundred and fifty dollars.
Want me to break it down for you?
I, I'm just, it, it adds, I didn't see that it had, had, oh, okay, so that whole sheet is the, okay, I'll look at it.
The list of, right, from the account, correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, got it.
Yeah. So, so moving down that list, so...
The annual fire access is only a hundred and twenty-eight dollars, by the way.
Okay, no, thank you. Um, computer maintenance went up a good deal. Do we know, I, again, I apologize if I...
Veracuda backup? It's...
It's our online backup for our server.
Okay, but so...
And it's an annual subscription that I think at the time we were putting the budget together, we weren't aware of.
Yep.
Okay. Um, it looked, huh, so copy machine maintenance went, came down. Dues, memberships.
Let me see that, please.
Tuitions, now dues, memberships, tuitions, was that, was that, did that reside elsewhere or it just wasn't on the budget at all? Cause it was previously zero.
Um, I don't think, that, I thought that was always there.
Okay. It, on our, on the last one we had, there is no, there is no budget for that. And, and perhaps...
I remember talking about this, though, back in April. Cause we did talk about it, I remember that, but I, you're right, it's like, here it's not.
It's, it's not under, um, actually, it's blank in our approved budget. Which is, so, okay, so it was previously, I, what I was trying to, to figure out is, is it a wash somewhere? Did we take it out of somewhere else? And the answer is no, we've added that. And so, okay, so that's an addition.
Well, I, I don't know where the budget went, when she said in the approved one.
Yeah, it's not there, it's easy.
Um, health and safety are... Thank you. That went up.
It went to match the...
Closer to actuals, gotcha. Let's see, and now I'm back off, um, off track again here. Wouldn't be the first time. All right, let's see. Okay, landscaping maintenance came down. Okay, so overall, that category went up by almost a thousand dollars. Communication, so twenty dot forty-two, uh, email... Came down. Advertising went up. Internet and postage came down. Postage and cellphone are the same, and so we're at the same, that, we're at the same net. Travel, twenty forty-three stayed the same. Um, let's see. Okay, twenty-four, twenty, twenty forty-four, twenty forty-five. We have no, we have nothing in the budget for those, well, I guess, I'm guessing that there's a, well, I'm, I'm not sure how twenty, the twenty forty-two item advertising and twenty forty-four advertising, how do those differ?
I have no idea. I looked at that and said, well, I'm gonna take her twice.
And I guess I would just ask the question, what, what's posting, what's posted one place versus the other? But we, I would presume we wanna put those together.
And are they, is it possible that some things are double-posted?
I don't think it would be double-posted.
Okay.
Because it, it would be, it would be a bill, so I'd build them.
Should I at least stick them in, okay.
It might have just been coded to the wrong...
Yeah.
Advertising.
Okay.
It's, I have to look at it.
Okay, so conceivably, if we can't distinguish why there are two separate ones, we would combine them and then, uh, not to, you know, it, then we're clearly over budget. Good, bad, or indifferent, just is. Um, insurance. Do we have, um, so this went up. Did it go up based on payments we expect to make through the end of this year? Okay. Okay, that's a big, I mean, that's a, that's a sizable chunk of money, of course. Yeah, so that, that budget item went up thirteen thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars.
The end of next year, well, the end of November next year, because the policy runs December to December is my understanding.
So, sorry, I, I missed a little bit of what you said there. So we're expecting to make a payment before January first?
Before December, the end of November.
No, this year.
November twenty fifteen.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
And the policy will run us until end of November.
Okay, so what we paid was a prorated amount to get us to a certain period.
Their normal renewal period.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. All right, um, let's see, so that's, I'm gonna just make myself a note on that really quickly. All right, the, excuse me, the boiler expense went down slightly. Other CVP water. Everyone's favorite patron water. We added in a, a budget item for that, thank you. Pool water has that amount, oh, I guess, well, so that came down considerably, but we added in the patron water amount. Gotcha.
But the total has gone down.
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, and so the total expenses for that utilities category are, uh, six thousand dollars, more than six thousand dollars, um, down, which is wonderful. Twenty forty-eight. Repair and maintenance, um, and so on the flip side, um, integrity energy services added to that one. So we celebrated for a moment and, and, uh, and then this guy. Cause this didn't appear anywhere else on the budget, correct? Okay. Because of the misunderstanding as to whether we, there was anything to pay. Anyway.
Well, I think it was in the budget as other services prior, and it actually did go down about seven hundred.
Other services, oh, other services in, uh, five seventy-six.
Twenty forty.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. So that being said, sorry, I'm just, so... Our overall, so twenty forty-eight, that has come down. So then in this other services, other, can that, that can conceivably go away?
Yes.
That would be fantastic.
So will the, the actual total for the budgeted would be to eighty-eight, four ninety-five?
Yeah.
Once you delete that ten, okay.
Okay, so, and, oh, I'm looking at the wrong page again. All right, so we added, um, the budget for employee advice services and that at current is, is actual. But that's a great one, I mean, just for in terms of our consideration of the twenty sixteen budget. Election services. Now, we, we discussed this on Friday, why did we bring this one down, ten thousand dollars? Do, does anybody know? If you don't know, I don't need you to justify it, I just am asking the question. Uh, election services, correct.
Is it that case that we don't know until the law is gonna be on the ballot and then somehow the money gets something like that?
Yes, as it was explained to me by, um, when I went to the elections office, we, we don't really know until, um...
Until the total cost.
The total cost of the election and then they...
Well, but, but I, I think, I think where I'm going with that, with my question is, so, so I, I, I understand that we don't know what our portion of that payment is until the election is completed, based on the mailings and the ballots and all of that stuff. Our, what, whatever portion of the ballot we have is the portion we have to pay. But do, do we know why we decided that it should come down by ten thousand dollars? Cause that, that concerns me.
I feel like that ten thousand dollars difference is not election services, but it was money that we had set aside for an audit. I could be wrong on that, but...
An audit that we do, are not required to have this year.
Expecting to get in October, but we have not received the word that we are getting one.
Okay, so I'll just, I mean, I think, eh, that's an open question that...
Definitely.
It, it, it just bears, um, eh, bears confirmation in the next discussion about this. I just wanna be sure, of course, and I think everybody does, that we don't end up short.
Cause when we were talking about how much it was gonna cost, we, we did over, hopefully overestimate, we were saying it could cost as much as fifteen thousand for the election. And we have to have that money in the bank in January, because that's when the bill's gonna come due, and we're not getting, um, my understanding is, we won't get a payment from the levy until February, so...
We'll get a small one in January.
But the... But remember, we have to make payroll.
Yes.
But the, the large one, it won't be until, is it April or May?
Summer, and so I've seen it anywhere between March all the way up to May. Summer, and so I've seen it anywhere between March all the way up to May.
We have to have money in the account, we can't... We have to make sure we have enough to pay this. And if means we get less paper, that's okay.
So, special events, I'm, I'm just gonna move, move on, there, there's nothing we can do about that in, in this, other than we made the note, and we'll, we'll move on from that. Um, the, um... Uh, in eighty forty, special events programs, um, three thirty-six oh one. Um, I guess we need a budget item there.
Where are you, what page?
I'm on page twelve of thirteen.
Okay.
Sorry, um...
Yeah, where did the budget not go?
Oh, especially this.
And I'll tell you what's confusing to me, when you look at that. Special events program, January fifteenth, first through October fifteenth, three hundred and thirty-six dollars, budget zero percent, zero dollars, over three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Percent of budget, a hundred percent, is not one hundred percent. You didn't budget it, there's nothing, there's three thousand or three hundred and thirty-six percent. And if you go through there, this is what's confusing, the, the whole time I was looking at this here, why I was thrown off. If you go back to travel under twenty point forty-three, under N WAC travel, again, bud, are the expenses twenty-two fifty-seven, budget is zero. Over budget's two thousand dollars, percent of budget, one hundred percent, it is not, it's two thousand, whatever. That's the part that's confusing in this here. And that's why I've been looking at this, going like, I'm lost, have no idea what the hell's going on. And that's the part that was throwing me off until I finally figured it out.
So, is that, um, Joanna and Julie, is that a setting in, um, QuickBooks? Is this a calculation that's being done elsewhere?
It is a calculation that QuickBooks does, I can look and see if there's some sort of setting that will...
Okay.
Adjust that.
Okay, because it seems, you know how like in Excel, when you get to determine how to, how to show a negative or whatever? Because you, your, your point is absolutely right, because if you're, if you're trying to look at percent of budget, it seems like, oh, okay, well, that's, that's cool, that's fine.
That's why I was looking before, it was a hundred and forty percent, and I was like, okay, now I'm starting to make, it was like, something's throwing me off. And then when I started looking at it and looking, and I started marking going, this is what's throwing me off.
Right, so I, depending on what the settings in QuickBooks are, I think we'd prefer something like either stars, or something that, that calls it out separately, you know, that...
The thing about it, if you go to the bottom here, under page twelve thirteen, net ordinary income, it's seven hundred and forty-one percent. So, somewhere in there, it's not, this is all adding it up, though we are going across, it's not doing it correctly there.
And I'm not sure why it doesn't have a budget number for special events, because I know that when you guys were revising the budget, that there was a number there for that, so I would have to look at that.
There wasn't on the last P and L.
There wasn't.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and some of that was when I was going through it, and putting the, trying to go through the mix outs, which you back to a P and L like that.
While you're looking, may I ask you a question?
Go, please go for it.
We were talking about unemployment insurance, where is that anyway?
You knew it in Nano.
I'm just trying to figure out where it was.
It is the very first thing, um, unemployment paid to E S D under salary, and we just five, seven, six, twenty ten.
Five, seven, six, twenty ten?
It's nine.
Because I was trying to find that. Twenty ten. Okay, thank you. Is that done, by the way? Are we still paying out like right now? Because I heard it could go up to two years.
I think we're still paying.
I, the, we're billed quarterly, and the last one that I gave, um... Number one, but I have to see if they bill from now.
Because I mean...
You're, can I just catch up? You're, you're referring to unemployment?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
There's two people we're paying unemployment insurance on right now, right? How long is that going to go? Is it also going to be this quarter too? And if so, that has to be figured in this budget, you know, that's, that's the only reason I brought it up.
No, no, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we were tied in with what you were saying, and, and so your question was where do, where does that appear?
It's for a swim, former swim coach, but also another employee that I don't know how in the world we're responsible for that person, but we are. It's really strange, but we're still paying.
But where, and so where does, sorry, again, I'm trying to just catch up, um, because I was looking at something.
Five, seven, six, twenty ten.
Thank you.
Salary, wages, unemployment paid to E S D.
Okay, thank you.
And the only reason I brought it up, because I, I was, I was looking for it, I missed it, and I just know that, that that's something that we don't have in the budget at all. And, and I don't know how much a quarter, I mean, I'm looking at this, if it's seventy-seven hundred dollars for the last three quarters. I mean, you can kind of see that it's probably going to be just over two thousand dollars for the rest of the year, so, you know, so anyway.
No, I think that's a valid, um... No, I, thank you for pointing that out, so we're, so that's back on, in case, I think, everybody might be there, but, but that's back on page, page five of this.
I need to go backwards.
That's okay. No, Steve, it's, it, part of it is if we need to be, so, so this, this exercise is intended to, I think, have value two ways. One is so that we adjust our 2015 budget to be accurate, the other one is so that we learn a lesson for 2016, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the whole goal, so I, I appreciate you bringing it up.
And I guess, actually, it's seventy-six, more like twenty-five hundred, twenty, somewhere in there, so, yeah.
I asked the same question, when are we going to?
Be done?
Because what I had understood, and I can't remember who it was that explained it to us, we could be paying for up to two years.
It was the lawyer.
Okay, if that's the case, former coach Bill Patterson would be August of twenty sixteen, maybe two years. And then this other gentleman, I have no clue what happened there, so, anyway. So, we have to put in the budget under those twenty-five hundred dollars, won't we?
Mm-hmm, sounds like it, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, it really, since there is nothing in the budget, we would really need to put, that's really ten thousand.
You're right, exactly, yes, yes.
And didn't, the other guy got fired for cause, and so, anyway, that's for the director.
It's because of his past employer, there was two employers involved, for whatever ungodly reason, we have to shoulder part of that responsibility.
Right.
Pay part of it as well.
Except that, um, you're, if it was, if they were fired for cause, Bill Patterson, I, I don't know if we can argue that, but the other guy, it sounded like we could. But you have to then go in and say, yeah, we want the money back, by the way, because he got fired for cause, and then it's like, yeah, the state's like, yeah, good luck with that.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you gotta challenge, when the state sit there and says you have to pay, then you have to challenge it with them to sit there and say why you don't, but you have to keep paying until you basically win.
Well, what they said with, um, the E S D is, we are a reimbursable. So, if they, if E S D does their research and they find out that this person was fired, they can go after the money, and then they can pay, reimburse us. When that's going to happen?
Okay.
They don't have an answer for us.
Do you know if we've, have we gone forward and challenged it? Because I thought it was, he really was fired.
Coach Patterson, there was no, but this other young person maybe would, yeah.
Anyway, okay.
But anyway.
It's not so much about challenging them, it's them doing their, the E S D doing their research to find out if this person was actually fired.
So, so they, so they pay it out, they give the benefit of the doubt, if, if I'm understanding. They give the benefit of the doubt, and then they do the research, and if we find, if they find, oh, that's not supposed to happen, then there's...
They said they can go after him.
So, so, okay, so given, right, but given time, you know, time value of money there, we just have to count it as an expense, and I, if we get something back, that's really great, but it sounds like our hands are, 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 our, our hands are a bit tied here. Um, in this case, and potentially even moving forward, that it sounds like it just makes sense to have something in the budget here regardless. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I know that's been a pain, a, a point of difficult understand, I mean, for me, it's difficult to understand.
It is.
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Um, it doesn't look like anything else changes until you get to kind of the bottom line stuff, and, um, so it, it looks like, um... Overall, that, the, with the current adjustments, that the budget has, the expenses have gone up by thirty-two thousand dollars. And the bottom line is... Is a, a net loss of fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so we obviously know that, there, we, we know that there's still adjustments, we just talked about some of them. It sounds like the, the adjustments to revenue needs to be made, um, to in fact balance this budget. Uh, not meaning to balance it, but that, that part has to be done, and then adjustments still need to be made. Um, does it, does it make sense for us to talk about a timeline, or do, I mean, do you guys feel like you can do that right now? I, we, we know that we have only a, a certain amount of time to do this activity as well as the other budget.
Can I ask a quick question? Do you, was this supposed to be balanced?
No, this is just as far as we made it in light of everything else going on.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know if, because there were things that weren't taken out of here, because of, you know, that maybe it was, actually you had figured out it was balanced. Because there's that ten thousand dollars that's in there twice, is one thing.
Well, but it, but if there's a, yeah, but if there's a net of, okay, well, we have to add in ten thousand for this, if we have to, for example, adjust N WAC due, I mean, I'm just, I'm just going with things off the top of my head, um, you know, that there are some other things in terms of revenue that we'll need to adjust. Um, that number's gonna change again.
Yes.
Yes.
And probably not to a final point, but change again until it changes again.
Okay, sorry, then back to her question.
I would say realistically, if we want to establish a timeline, let's go for it. I think we need to assume that this week is over as far as our purposes to do this. So, it'll be Monday before we can really tackle it again, so I would base your next meeting timeline on that.
Okay, you can tackle it on Monday when we have it done.
Well, we can start tackling it on Monday, we also are going to run into the unfortunate time of the month where we are at the end of one month, beginning of a new month, which puts a ton of extra, um, our, our normal burdens are there that, um, on top of trying to do this, will really be juggling our time.
Tuesday, November tenth.
Yeah, I would say somewhere in there is probably a really good timeframe. Um, I know that I will have two, or three holidays next week of just getting the event stuff done for October.
Let's go with Thursday.
The, the twelfth?
Okay.
I think I'm good, I gotta bring my calendar.
We need you. When, when are you, when are you gonna be here?
Um, I probably, uh, well, Wednesday is, um, Veterans Day, right?
Oh, it is.
Yeah, so, just to...
Can you be here on Tuesday the tenth?
I can, yeah.
Okay, because I was just trying to give them a couple more days.
Yeah, no, I understand, well, that's, I'm, I'm out of, I'm out of town, unfortunately.
Yeah.
And then we, you know, we also have, if we want to try to, as a, as a group, finish this activity, you know, we have through the twenty-fourth, um, meaning that's our last day. Right?
No, I, yeah, I understand that.
I'm just trying to put that on the table.
And it's imperative that you go through here, I believe, the three of you, I mean, are the continuation, and it's, it's more important that you three can be here than, than myself, I believe.
Well, the reason that I think it's important you guys be here is because we went through this process all year together, and we, we know, and rather than having to explain...
I appreciate it.
You don't want to do this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, so, so, okay, sorry, go ahead, can it be ready on the tenth?
We should have vast improvements by the tenth, I can't guarantee it's going to be one hundred percent.
If we, if we approve over time, can that make it happen? And I don't know if we can...
Well, I don't, I don't know that, well, one, we can't do that, but, but two, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a fair expectation, I don't think that's fair.
Erica's going to be back, because I really don't want to put all the pressure on her.
That is the thing, and she was advised to take a chunk of time off that she... I do not believe she'll take as much time off as she was advised, but I think it's imperative we give her at least the rest of this week to kind of...
Can, can we, uh, sorry, was, I mean, I, I was unaware that she was out of the office, and I, I, to, to be quite frank, just for purposes not to you guys, but I think I would have expected to know that, um, that, that she's not going to be here. I mean, I hope she's okay, and I...
She was forced to leave in an emergency situation.
Oh.
Um, I did text Sean and let him know, um, as the board chair, I figured he was the go-to one for it.
Is she sick or not?
And these are some HIPAA things going on.
Oh, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not asking for details, I'm just saying, I, I...
She's off right now.
She, she is off, and, um, when we're not being recorded, if anybody wants.
Sorry, I forgot about that.
I don't want to violate anything.
No, 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 it just, it was just more of in terms of notification, hey, she's not going to be around, because for, for us, then, I mean, the, a, a different communication process takes place, right?
It happened very suddenly this afternoon, where it was like, you need to go.
This is fine.
Okay, it is, and it is her budget, so maybe...
Yeah, the one thing that we may sit there and say, plan on it on the tenth, but under the same circumstance, you know, um, Sean consent to reschedule the meeting if Erica's not back yet, and stuff like that, and I mean, we are getting close on time, I totally realize that, but she has to be here.
And I, I think, yeah, absolutely, and I think, so I think in that respect, I, I, I think you're right, let's put, let's schedule for the tenth, because if we keep, if we keep moving it out, then we're, we've, we've run out of our own rope.
Yes.
Um, so, schedule something for Tues, for Tuesday, November tenth at...
What time for you guys?
Five.
Five hours.
Five P, at five P M, and, um, if, if I, am I being presumptuous if I say that we would be looking at an updated copy of 2015 and that we would be reserving 2016 to then, or do you guys feel prepared to talk about the 2016 budget right now?
I think we can go through the basics on the 2016 right now.
Okay, um, okay, and, so...
It's not nice.
But let's, let's make sure that we, when we put the agenda, we talk about both, but put it both on the agenda, just so that we can talk about both.
Yep, no, absolutely agree. Um, alright, so, 2015 budget, we're done talking about now, we're gonna move on to the 2016 budget, and is that what you gave us here?
Yes.
Okay, um, so the, the portrait document, um, and, so here's what I would propose, oh yay, and attached assumptions, sorry, that just made me really happy right there.
It's the same one that Erica emailed out with?
Sure.
The Excel version, I just attached it.
No, that's wonderful, that's, I was, I didn't want to kvetch that, that they weren't there, but, um, um, could I propose that, that our process for going through this is having, having you guys, um, just walk us through? And us not, just basically walk us through it, and then we'll go from there, is that fair?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great.
Um, you will see on this as we go through it, that Joanna and I have done a ton of work to kind of move things around a little bit, so they're in the categories where they truly belong, and we tried to add things in, to break things out a little bit more. For example, down in rental concessions, we have SCUBA, private party rental, open swim party rental, we've removed the term birthday party, because we do get bookings that are not for birthday parties. Um, so just a more accurate representation of what we actually have.
Great, okay.
She, she's over here motioning, and I can't believe she's...
You guys can figure that out.
Do you have that alone? No, but I printed like three. Okay, do the ones you have all have the SCUBA on them under three sixty-two?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Then you guys have the good ones. So, um, you know, the first thing on the assumptions in the revenue side, we really looked at two things, many of the areas have a ten percent fee increase. We did this prior to your meeting where you guys voted for your fee increase. Um, some categories, we did put a little higher than a ten percent increase. Um, at the time we were doing this, we felt it was fair, if we need to increase revenue, that all of our users shared the burden kind of equally, um, rather than targeting certain groups. Um, we did put a little bigger increase in that, I believe. I think she calculated a larger increase for the N WAC number, and possibly also for the swim school number. Um, I know the swim school, um, price has not been adjusted, um, since the other ones were adjusted, so I think that might have been why she went a little higher there. Um, we also put a ten percent increase in patron usage due to new people coming, plans we have to promote better, silver sneakers, um, just community growth with the new commands coming in with the military. So, on the income side, that is kind of where we got some of these numbers that seem significantly higher than what we had for this year. We did separate out school group lessons in the swim school, um, under three forty-seven thirty. Those are people that come in from like, oh, parvory elementary, drinks, um, classes over, I think it's their third grade.
Sorry, can you, sorry, um, wait, three thirty seven?
Three forty-seven thirty. Three forty-seven thirty.
Ah, school group, okay, thank you. School group, private and youth, okay, thank you.
And is four thousand dollars, what did you make last year on that? Was that
You know, I'm not one hundred percent sure. She did the math on this. The way that they were coding, they all went in as youth lessons.
Right.
So
So, but you did the math and the math makes sense for the four thousand? Or are you talking about Erica made the math?
Erica did the math.
Okay.
That's school group lessons from a upper elementary, upper Christian. And I think that that probably, I mean, you invoiced out for them. So, we can, we can look at that.
Okay.
Under swim team, we did, and some of these things are things that we proposed that required your approval. On the N WAC travel fund, family fee, that is based on five dollars per family per month and thirty-five swimmers over the course of a year. So, that would give us an additional nineteen hundred and twenty-five dollars in revenue. N WAC locker rental, we broke out. That's something that was not in the 2015 budget at all. I think a lot of little things like that kind of got overlooked in the, in the process there. With the locker rentals, they can rent a locker for twenty-five dollars a year. It's an annual thing that renews, not just date-to-date. Since we've really started letting people know that that's an option, we, I think we've rented three or four out since the people know it as we have more new members coming on, so
Can I stop you right there? Who decided that?
You know, when I started here, they were just switching from it being twenty-five dollars forever to twenty-five dollars annually, and I don't know who decided it.
Yeah, we as a board, I kinda need to go back and look at the minutes of that.
I don't know where that came from.
Okay.
It's kind of, that's what it's been since I've been here.
I'm gonna investigate that a little bit, because there was a board decision on those locker fees at one time. So, anyway, I'll get back with you.
Well, see, I remember that when I first started, that like the older families had been twenty-five dollars one time, and then the newer families, it's an annual.
And really, I guess, there's probably nobody, it's grandfathered in now, so we're probably
I think we have two or three or four.
Thank you.
I did break apart the N WAC swim accessories retail and then
There was a reason for that, because N WAC purchased, actually purchased those lockers.
Yeah, and
Yeah, there was a reason, so
Yeah, and that made sense back then.
I don't see it on there.
What?
It was one of the things I did late this afternoon to break out the swim, N WAC swim accessories retail. And then I had an N WAC swim apparel. So, the retail would be things that the district purchases for resale and the apparel would be items that are ordered by families and billed through their team unit by account. I'll make sure that that's back in there, I don't quite know.
That's a good idea, thank you.
You know, it's the thing, because we do not budget anything for the apparel.
Gotcha.
But yeah, I wrote that out, so we can clearly see which ones the district is paying for upfront and which ones
Are pass-throughs as well. Yeah, thank you.
Late fees, we, I think the one she emailed out had an attire number, and I think it was a typo, so we adjusted that to two hundred dollars.
Yeah, it was something like six thousand or something.
I think it was three thousand.
It was a huge number and I thought, what the hell?
You know, so far this year, we've collected around a hundred and twenty in late fees. That's one of those things, if everybody pays their bill on time, we're not going to have that, but people don't always pay their bill on time. Meat fees, that should end up being a wash. USA swimming registration fees, we based that on seven, seventy-one dollars is what we think the registration will go up to. And I think that was based on sixty swimmers. But again, that's something that should be a pass-through. N WAC dues, we have sitting at thirty-four, three twenty. And I don't know what she did with that. I feel like I'm a cheat.
The master's exactly what it was last year, so I assume she's, that there's not gonna be
The, well, she did make a change on the N WAC, though.
Yeah, but she just, masters, masters stayed the same, but N WAC changed.
N WAC changed. So, she has it an average of sixty-five dollars per month times forty swimmers times eleven months is where she got the N WAC number. We did not factor in a fee increase in that yet. We were anticipating it being more than the ten percent, just, there's so much discussion around it that we kind of left it alone when we were looking at that.
And that's fine.
But yeah, masters, we left the same. Meets, we left at the six thousand. Coach already has one meet booked through PNS for next year, and he's working on the application for the second one. And so, we're toning it down to about three thousand a meet. This meet that we just had, we had two other clubs come and our revenues are gonna be somewhere around that three thousand more. So, part of it happened with this one, and I don't know if we discussed it in the meeting last week, I think maybe we did. That Halloween invite used to be our meet. Now, because we missed it last year, a lot of people went to other places, there were other meets going on. Previous meets, we've had five or six clubs here, so that's part of why we've had to adjust that. And I think we will probably run into the same type of thing with the Halloween happening meet, because we weren't able to do that this spring, which Coach just did not come on board in time to get that submitted to PNS.
Right, yeah.
So, that's gonna be a little bit of a hurdle there. Running club, we left at a thousand. And I know that's something that came up of, you know, did you guys really sign off on continuing it? I know your guys' recommendation, Donnysue and Wendy, was that the program would continue with some additional marketing support.
Well, it was, it was last, it was last November, we said, we as a board said, it goes on hiatus until we have a chance to review it.
But when you guys did the program review, I believe your recommendation was that it was a solid program to invest in, but no vote actually happened.
Yes, it was to look at it
It was to look at it, right, but, but based on a budget of breaking even, yeah, so, you know, whatever, we're gonna
Yeah, she left it there, so it's there. We left three thousand again for our special events and programs. Part of the reason we're so low this year is, you know, in all honesty, we are all slammed with other things and that's unfortunately something that has kind of fallen victim to how busy we are with the administrative stuff. And we left it there because anticipating a director that would be involved and Erica and I both having more time to invest in that as well. We have some really awesome ideas that we're looking forward to being able to move forward on.
In 2012, 2013, what was the revenue from special events and programs?
I can find out.
I'm just saying, is this based on something that happened in the past when people were, did have time to put time, to put effort into those things?
I don't know that anybody really put the effort into it that we're talking about putting into it. But I'm looking at those numbers for you.
Okay.
I know that when I started here, special events, the big special event to have was come to Bubble Night, where if you came to open swim on Friday, you got, you know, a little thing of bubbles like this to blow bubbles in the pool. That, it's like a bonus thing to me, that's not what I consider a special event to draw people to our facility. So, it's really apples and oranges, but I can get the numbers and see what they did look like for that. Public records requests, twenty-five dollars is roughly what we've had this year, assuming we get about the same. Surplus sales, she is hoping that we'll get the kayaks that we have remaining sold in the spring. And then also, I believe, one of the vehicles she was looking at possibly surplusing out. In the rents and concessions, we broke SCUBA out. Two thousand is about what we expect to end up this year. He may offer a little more next year, we're not sure. I think she's gonna make a call and kind of see what his thought process is on that. Private party rental, open swim rental. I don't know if we factored in the fee increase on those yet. I think we kind of left those alone as far as a fee increase. We definitely have some ideas to market those a little bit better and try and fill those spaces. With the open swim especially, and I know that it was brought up at the last regular meeting, to offer a lower price of open swim rental for the kids' pool and this space. I know that that is something that people have asked for, so I think that that would help drive that revenue a little bit if we can get that done. The other thing there, viewing room rental, so again, this would be a time when there's plenty of other facility space for Silver Sneakers people to use, that this room could be rented out for a meeting. We have had people come in and request it just because, you know, they need a space away from their office for a meeting.
What do we charge for that?
We don't, because it's not
That's right.
Yeah, that's a thing we need you guys to approve.
Yes, gotcha.
We bumped up the candy and snacks to fifteen thousand from the thirteen thousand that we're targeting for this year. This last three or four months, concessions have sold really, really well. I think part of it is that, and I did raise prices a little bit on some things, just cost comparison, most stuff came in from Costco. But we are still a little bit cheaper than the Seven-Eleven and AMPM, and we have the kids that walk here from the middle school, after school, and get their snacks. And when it's really visualized, and we're working on some better marketing so that people can see it better. You know, even our elderly aerobics people, they can have, oh, I can get fruit, I can grab a salad, and they're excited by that. So, I think if we
Sell salad here?
Periodically. It's not something we can keep in all the time, because Costco's not necessarily the most reliable with how long it's going to be good, so I can only order it in small batches.
Was that the salad you had today?
Mm-hmm.
That looked like a good salad.
It was a good salad.
So, there aren't any, we're not, we're not violating anything by doing that, right?
No, they're prepackaged.
Okay, and so we sell them as is?
Yes, yeah, we don't open anything for
So, okay, so there's no additional inspections that need to take place for those? Okay, just making sure. I was, I was unaware of the salad. That's cool.
Yeah, it's like the all tree, they're in the refrigerator and they come out.
That's good to know, awesome.
Where are we, Clover Valley, so that's the ball field rentals. And that's, I believe, our contract with Bayberry's, that's about what it equals out. High school, we have five thousand. This is something that in researching back, looking through things, I believe at some point, and Steve, you might be the one to help with this, that the board directed a previous director to ask for a higher amount from the high school than they're currently paying. There is, I believe it was in the Walker's budget assumptions for 2014, that you had a higher amount that the board was requesting, that has never been instituted.
Have you talked to the high school about the five thousand dollars?
We have not. We have not.
I personally think that that's something that the board would need to decide.
Well, I think it is one of these
Because it is, it is over forty percent.
Yeah.
From thirty-five hundred to five thousand.
Yeah, it is one of the things start here that would require a board approval.
Yeah.
And basically
I mean, even I think before the director would coach the athletic director, the board needs to
That's one of the, that's one of the fees, it's on that list of fees, and so, that'll, we will discuss that.
Thank you, very much.
Let me find where she had the note about
She did, she did have a note, and it was to make it, instead of eight eighty a month, it was make it a thousand a month. And I guess they're now paying over four months instead of five.
Instead of the five months that they actually need.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's why there's that higher amount there, with the understanding that that
And I would say this on that, as the board goes forward on this, if I may, the pool at this time is much more open to the high school than the way it used to be. One of the big problems that Nikki Looper and the school administration had four years ago
Who's Nikki Looper?
She's athletic director.
Athletic director, okay.
Was that, that N WAC at the time was, was acting like a very exclusive, it's my pool and my lanes and you can't have any. And so, there was this
Was this when they threatened to do away with the program?
Yes, it is. So, there was this big conflict between the high school and North Whibley Park and Rec, specifically N WAC. So, there's this feud going on. And I, and that's why they were threatening to pull out at the time. And I do think that they would be open to a reasonable increase now that we've, we're much more open to them and anyway. That was the problem back then, was not the money so much as, they didn't like being treated like a second-class citizen really, so, yeah.
No, thank you for letting us know that.
Lockers, we expect to stay, we left it about the same as what we have for this year. If that were to go, the fee were to be increased, then that would naturally go up. Caution on that, though, since they're quarter, I don't think you can really go through this, what, fifty cents logically, probably. I think we have a lot of people that are not going to be willing to pay fifty cents for lockers, so you might actually have a little, it would probably even out.
But then there are people like me who, you know, despite the fact that I, I have an annual pass and I use it twice a year, I still, I want my swimming stuff to be here, I don't want to cart stuff back and forth.
Well, that's a different fee.
But isn't that part of locker rental?
It is, it is part of that, yes.
So, you do have people that are like, they'll pay for the convenience.
You do, you do, absolutely. Pool group rentals, a thousand dollars, that's going to be, you know, we have somebody that comes in and they want to rent the facility, not necessarily for a private party, not during a private rental time. I know we have a group looking next year that if they can get the grant funding to pay for it, they want the pool for like a three-hour block on a Wednesday night. It's gonna be something like that where it would be a special situation. Or I know we've done rentals
What? They want it for a three-hour block?
They want it for a three-hour block and they want to pay like five hundred dollars for it. It would be something for a director to decide if it was a worthy thing, potentially.
Do I open swim? No.
Well, we close open swim for other silly things.
Every, every Wednesday?
Not every Wednesday, no, they want it one Wednesday.
Oh.
One Wednesday in the spring they want it, it's not, yeah. It's like a one-time special event thing.
Yeah, it's like I knew what she meant.
It's one Wednesday, they want it for about a three-hour time block. And they believe that they would be bringing maybe as many as two hundred people.
Oh, that's cool.
So, for, for, well, and for their particular group, that would max our capacity before we let anyone else in, so that was part of the discussion. Also, we've had like the hydroplane people come in and they'll do their special testing they have to do, rescue, whatnot. So, things like that would fall under this category, so not just your, oh, I'm renting the pool for a party kind of people. And I think Dragon Boat's also fall under that, the way we had it. Retail, the three thousand, we brought it down a little bit from what we had on the 2015. We had, and if you look at our 2015 revenue for that, it's quite a bit lower than we projected. We had a time period back in the spring, late winter, when we were waiting for the levy to come through, where we were unable to order things. And it really, really hurt us. We had about a six-week period where we had no goggles to sell, and it was that time of year where people were wanting to come back to the pool and get back to swimming because spring was coming and we had nothing to offer them. So, I think that really hurt us. But we went ahead and lowered the number.
But, but by the same token, then we also didn't realize the expense, because we don't make a whole lot on those, right? I mean, just, I'm just saying, it balances out, it would be nice if we can provide that, but this is more of a service than a money-making opportunity for us.
For most of those goggles, we about double our money.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's not something in the big scheme of things. I understand, it's, I think, I think we were, sorry, I think before it's been said that we have very low margins on our stuff. But, and if that isn't the case, that's, that's great.
Not on the goggles so much. And it's kind of one of those things on public perception and how people look at us and are we going to be dependable for them?
And I understand
So, it hurts us beyond that six-week year.
I understand that, but, but in reality, it's not that we lost money, we lost revenue for something that we didn't, we weren't able to spend the money for. And, and that's, I mean, so it's, it wasn't a lost expense, it was an unfounded expense that couldn't, revenue couldn't be realized for it.
And I guess I look at it a little bit differently, because if we had spent two hundred and fifty dollars to buy goggles that we would have made five hundred dollars with, now we would have two hundred and fifty dollars to, I don't know, fix a hair dryer for the ladies in the locker room.
And I understand your point, but part of it is, I mean, when we look back at the 2015 budget right now, I can't tell you, the way that it currently sits, I don't know that that situation's going to be any different. So, in that respect, I think what we're trying to help plan is, is so that we don't have that situation. But that is going to require lots of trimming elsewhere to make that one thing happen. And so, part of it is opportunity cost to determine where that money should, should really reside.
Moving on, on the expenses. She did, and we have eleven thousand there for E S D again, just to seeing we still have to continue paying the unemployment. Shutdown maintenance, thirty-five hundred. We figure that we will have to close for a week or so, probably in August. We have not closed since we were shut down for the pump failure. There's some lights in the pool that will need to be changed.
So, that fifteen, that fifteen thousand, though, also, facility reserve fifteen thousand, that, that's part of that recreation services, even though, or how is that?
That fifteen thousand is facility reserved to put back the other thirteen thousand that we took out of
Okay.
A couple thousand extra out of the reserve.
I just wasn't, it was
Sorry, I missed it.
No, it's okay, it was right justified, and I was trying to figure out, did it mean something different?
I missed it because it was right justified.
Yeah, no, I agree, I, that's, I was a little confused, but, okay.
But yeah, so she did put in front of the shutdown maintenance there. Directors, she lowered, we had it at fifty-seven, which is the maximum. She put it down to fifty-five.
And when you say maximum, you mean from the employee handbook?
The maximum that Sean told her to put was fifty-seven for calculation purposes, no, the maximum from the employee handbook, I think it's forty.
Okay, well, and, and so the reason I ask that question is because that, because that actually hasn't, it hasn't been discussed and voted on by it, it hasn't been discussed and voted on by the board. Um, and so it's one of those things that it, it's just a, I'm, I'm not faulting, I'm not faulting anything that anybody did. It's, it's kind of a, we have to agree to that. And that's part of the budgeting process. But, but as well as when, in salary negotiations, we have to agree what that ranges.
Absolutely. Well, I think she went to the fifty-five a little lower than that number that she had been given to put there, based on the thought process that someone would need room to, um, for it to increase over there.
Yeah, thank you.
Thirty-eight thousand, I think that's about a thousand more than what she had anticipated to make in 2015 if she had been aquatic director the whole time. The number for cashiers, fifty, it's seven forty-five. That is just cashier hours at the front. It includes a little bit of extra for a second set of hands for busy times and training, I believe, three new employees. We did reduce it down some. I think we can streamline our training process so they don't require so many training shifts. The admin assistant, we have in at thirty-six thousand right now.
Can I ask you a question? On the, on the cashiers?
Mm-hmm.
Why, why is it going up four thousand dollars?
So before, and these numbers, the admin, the cashier, and if you notice, there's not a head cashier amount in there right now. These numbers, we still have to pull apart a little bit more and kind of find change. I just did a really quick calculation to get the cashier number for the total number of desk hours that that desk has to be manned. So some of those will be my hours that will pull back into head cashier. But right now, they're kind of all lumped together. And same thing with admin. Some of those admin hours, or some of that admin dollar amount, most of it will be Joanne's. A little bit of that falls into stuff that I still end up doing that's admin-related.
There is no head cashier on here, though.
There is not, because it's all, so right now, any hours I would spend at the desk are lumped into cashiers. Any hour I would spend off the desk are lumped into admin. So they will be separated out at some point. They just, we did not get quite that far on it. Um, aerobics instructor, she put at twenty thousand. I feel like number crunching, we'll probably pull that number down a little bit, but that's where it sits right now. Lifeguard training instructor, she has a two thousand. I did ask about this because this year, I think we're only at eighteen-something and we've taught all the classes we're going to teach. And with the expectation that she would be able to teach more classes next year, being on salary, I could think we could lower it. Her answer for that was that she has several people that have to teach a lifeguarding class to keep a certification. So to allow them to do that, she's still going to have to budget for them to be able to do that. She's got the running coach in there. Training, she left at forty-five hundred. I know she was able to bring that down some this year, so that might be a number that's a little bit flexible. Lifeguard, senior guards, um, she did indicate that she would be able to take some guarding shifts over the year once she's back to just being aquatic director. So there might be a little wiggle room there. I'm not quite sure how she arrived at those numbers. Team admin, we pulled down to twenty-five hundred. I think that that allotted for about an average of five hours a week on team admin stuff. That's down a lot from this year just because things are really being cleaned up and it's much more streamlined.
And then, real quick, who would be the team admin person?
I'd be the admin.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you, though.
We went ahead and separated it out so that for people that really want to see those NMAC expenses, separate it. It's clearly defined. Um, pool operator does, like we were discussing earlier, include both Matt and Stephanie in there. Janitorial staff, it's, it's a jump from this year. It's based on two workers here for four hours per night at ten dollars an hour, pretty much every day of the year. There are a few days where we're closed to the public and they're not really going to be in there, a few holidays were closed. It also includes ten hours, no, yeah, ten hours a week for our gardener, groundskeeper guy. The retirement and bar head coach and director are there. Sick pay for aquatic director, maintenance supervisor, director, head coach. So those are recognized there. And this is, Joanne and I have talked around and around on this. Because, you know, essentially, the aquatic director's going to make thirty-eight thousand dollars no matter what. So if she uses a hundred dollars of her sick pay, like, it's not on top of her thirty-eight thousand. And how to have that reflected correctly on here, that's been kind of the discussion back there. Were you talking to at least about that?
Can I back back to the payroll benefits retirement? Twenty point eleven? I understand that the head coach hasn't paid in this year.
This year, yes.
But if he chooses to and he pays seven percent, we have to assume that he's going to, to pay them. And that is not going to be sixteen forty-five. That is going to be, or some type-
Is it, we match up to seven? Is that accurate? I apologize, I don't know that.
It is seven percent.
Yeah, I don't know either.
It is. It is seven percent.
Okay.
So we'll check that number.
I believe it is.
Thirty-two ninety.
Yeah.
Which, this would, this is half of that.
Exactly twice, yeah.
And I think that that sixteen forty-five, that that is what we-
It was our half-year.
Yes, it was our half-year.
So thirty-two ninety is what it would be for the year, basically?
Yep. And is that forty-eighteen for the fifty-five, or forty-sixteen, or was that also for a half-year?
The forty-six-
Well, the fifty-four thousand for the direct, or fifty, what was it, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-five times seven percent?
Well, the seven percent of fifty-five thousand is thirty-eight fifty.
Yeah, so I don't remember where that came in.
I don't either.
Probably it wasn't, it wasn't brought down, so, I mean, I-
Yeah.
It was probably from the- This, we have to remember that that director number, we, we still have to, you know, but, but then there's a cor, there's a correlation. Absolutely. Now, there's a correlation.
Okay, so that's thirty-eight fifty.
And that's assuming that in the contract, that that's even offered.
Exactly.
Because there has been some talk about that.
Oh.
When we, when we offered the, the position to the, to the gentleman from California, we had taken that out of the equation because it wasn't in the budget at that time.
So that's all in the contract that we generate out.
Okay.
Or not generate, but we use a pre, but that's what we add in there along with the pay and all that negotiable stuff.
So vacation, that one stays in there no matter what because if they do leave, we do have to pay out vacation that they're owed.
But again, that's not on top of their regular salary.
If they leave, it, yes.
No.
If you have, we had to pay out, well, based on the Latos's contract, when he left, we had to pay out-
Oh, well, based on accrued, based on the amount accrued. Okay.
Yeah, so that's a little different sort of expense than the sick pay. Under personnel benefits, no payroll taxes, we have sixty-eight thousand. Under personnel benefits, instructional and aesthetic programming-
Can we, sorry, can we go back for a second? And so I, I think what I would at least like to see, sorry, this is, I, I realize this is a little more detailed and, and it might even seem off-topic. If it does, I apologize. But, but based on, based on leaving budget numbers in here, I would love to see us have accruals for these for next year. Does that make sense?
I think they do on the-
Okay, maybe they do.
Yes, and this is what?
Well, there's not a direct accrual because some of the numbers are static, and they have been. And maybe I'm, maybe I'm thinking of the wrong thing here, but-
Do you want to see accruals on sick pay and vacation?
Yes. Although I guess there would be a question about the sick pay. Well, but there's still, well, is it-
They do.
It is, it is an accrual. It is an accrual. Yeah.
Yeah. This is what they are for so far. For sick pay.
So the head coach accrues vacation and sick pay, these, he may accrue this, is the exact same amount? That's kind of weird. Sorry, I'm, I'm, that's, okay, that's, yeah. That's, it's, it's odd, but it's, it is what it is. I'm not-
Again, that's all the contract that we wrote.
Oh, I know, I know.
What, are you used to saying we look together?
Um, no, not necessarily. It just, I mean, you know, it's the, this is the rate of this and it, it seems, it seems a little odd to me that they are, are one for one. It just-
As government employee, when you first start out, it, it's one for one.
The man's never sick and he never takes vacation.
Yeah, and I guess that-
He's a brilliant swim coach.
No, and that's not what I mean, but I just mean that they accrue at the same rate.
Yes.
I, I find that, and, okay. I, I guess not ever being a government employee, that is odd to me. Yeah.
First three years and then it jumps and then it jumps again, but I understand.
Yeah, gotcha.
And we can change that, too.
Yeah, you're, go Cecil. Sorry, Commissioner Pierce.
So Cecil, I, I'm used to that name.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
I've heard you become the last name.
That's very true.
That's one of the nicer ones.
It's a nice one.
Sorry, I didn't mean to take us off track. I think we're, okay.
Personal benefits?
Yes.
So instructional and aesthetic program, we have five hundred dollars down for that. Erica is strongly recommending that the board do away with that program. That presently allows someone who takes a lifeguarding or WSite course here to get an eighty percent reimbursement after they have completed so many hours of work after that. And they are allowed to get that on top of an employee discount that they may have received for taking the class. So if they get the thirty percent employee discount when they take the class, like, say you have someone that starts as a swim instructor that's not certified and then they want to get certified, they get thirty percent off the two fifty for the class. And then after they work however many hours the requirement is, they get eighty percent of that discounted amount back.
But the thing is, that would be eighty perc, well, it's all depending on how it's worded. And that's stuff we have to look at, because if that's worded incorrectly, then-
Well, it's not in our current budget, even if it's, right, I mean, even if it's policy, which it is. So that, again, that's a policy change.
So she put it in this one with the recommendation that you guys consider removing it as a benefit.
Yep, gotcha.
And, you know, they get the benefit, this was, they get the benefit of being employed here. It's the land of happiness.
Exactly.
Employee award program, two forty, that's for the employee of the month award.
I, I think we've got to be very careful with that, though, because I don't think we can do that as far as give money out for that.
Well, it's not money. It's a gift that gets purchased for them.
That's purchased, that's money. That's dollar value.
Yeah, we had a little discussion about it earlier today. And the conversation was, the understanding was that as long as you're not handing them a twenty-dollar bill.
Who, and who said that?
Erica said that based on a conversation that they had had when they were researching the ability to offer-
I don't think it's against the law, but with that said, the government is beginning to really steer away from that because it is the taxpayers' money. It really, truly is.
Well, we talked about the same thing for pizza. I mean, it's, it doesn't seem that different, really. I mean, as much as we want people to feel appreciated, perhaps we need to find-
Yeah, it really is.
Yes.
It is about the taxpayers' money.
At any rate, it's there because that is mimicking what has been approved in all the previous budgets that we were reviewing, pulling it together.
Agreed.
Employee uniforms, she did take down to five hundred.
That is lifeguard shirts?
That is lifeguard shirts.
What was it at?
It was a thousand in the current budget. So she's been able to make do with around five hundred this year and figures that she would be able to do the same next year. Um, this is where we move medical to, twenty-three five is based on the assumption that we would be paying for medical for a new director and their spouse.
I, I personally would like to talk about that medical going forward, about what is the best way to do this. You know, we were made to believe that any employee work over thirty hours a week, we need to pay for insurance for them.
Right, isn't that a form?
I believe the requirement is that they offer the health insurance.
No, no, no. It's changed. You have to have X amount and I, and I, it's a pretty high number, actually, for full-time employees. That's why a lot of companies are opting to send people to the Health Exchange. And they get, what they will do is, they will say, okay, we still want to take care of our employees and in lieu of insurance, we're going to give whatever percent. We can't dictate that you use that to go get insurance, but this is what we're giving it to you for. Or do we go the route of not paying for spouse and children? Because that number is extremely high. And, and when we get to looking at a budget, I don't mean to be that person, but Washington State has done an exceptional job of using the Affordable Care Act to their advantage. And we can argue about that, but, but actually, there, there is something to be said for if a person is in a certain income bracket, they can actually get better insurance with a lower deductible through the Health Exchange than what we're offering them.
Because you had said this before and I, and I have actually thought about it.
Yeah.
And it's a good idea. And I was kind of thinking, maybe when we get the new director, let the new director be that, one of those things that he or she looks at into doing.
As long as they're in before the end of the year.
True, true.
Yeah, but I agree. That's, that's a good point.
But on the same aspect, you know, that's something that the new director is going to be taking on most of that. And that may be an expense that we need to look at before then.
And for the contract.
Exactly.
Back to-
Back to the contract.
Back to the contract.
And I hate to say that, but-
No, that's true. That's, but, but that's fair. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but part of it is, if, if we think that there is a, a better process, then perhaps it should be included in the offer.
Erica will refer to that, but I'm sure she's been overwhelmed with other things to what they, what it would, you know, just-
I, and I don't know if that, if those words were said that way.
You might correct.
Because I'm the one that writes these things down and I usually put a little star for action items. And I think it was, you broached it, we should look at, I think, is what you said. And I, I don't think it was, Erica, could you please look at this? And so I'm pretty sure that has not happened.
Is that something that we possibly could talk to the insurance company about to get some kind of head direction or something like that?
I don't know that they have anything to do with health insurance.
Well, it's strange because you-
Do you all will be able to tell us what our requirements, do you all-
Department of Labor.
Well, see, you, you can actually get on that Health Exchange website. You can put in numbers. You know, I am thirty-five years old and my wife is thirty-two and we have three kids and I make X amount of money. And here's what the government is going to subsidize and here's how much, because you're only allowed to pay a certain percentage of your income, you know? And if that person has a second or third job, that's not our responsibility at that point, but-
But I think, I, I think we're talking about, I mean, it's, it's all under the same umbrella, but what you're talking about is how we could potentially, to, to a certain extent, offer the same thing in lieu of, right? But, for the same thing, but I, I, and I think to Julie's point, it's-
And you have to know both sides.
Right, but, but part of it is really what's the requirement? Are we meeting it?
That, that would be the first thing I'd want.
Absolutely. And that's, so, I mean, I, I think that's a good suggestion is, is the Department of Labor-
If you could find that out before November tenth.
Why I can do that.
Would you be good with that, November tenth?
I think we, well, I would say, as soon, how about this? As soon as you're able to find it out-
And I email that out to you guys.
If you would, because to Cecil's point, and he's, he's very consistent. He's very consistent. No, but about, even, because the, the matter of a contract may or may not come up sooner than then, I think we expect that it will. And, and we have to be, I, I think, I think that the, probably the, my personal preference, and we will talk, I'm sure we'll talk about this more as a board, but my personal preference would be to go conservative in that respect and then have someone, if, hey, I really need this, okay, then, you know, let's just talk about for a second, you know, contract negotiations. Okay, well, I really need this. Okay, well, in that event, then we're willing to adjust this, this way, right? But really, the smart thing is, is to be conservative about it, because once you've given, I mean, we learned this with the, I'm going to call it SNAFU related to Coach Taylor's contract. Once it went out there, we couldn't get, some of it, we couldn't get back.
Yeah.
And even if, even though it went out improperly.
Yeah.
It was on the table.
I got you.
Yeah, so, um, thank you.
And something else food for thought with that, and I, I know that you have to base decisions on, you know, you might have future employees, but at the same time, you kind of have to look at current employees.
I agree.
So say, you know, based on your thought process, where maybe you pay five percent more for employees rather than-
I know where you're going and I agree totally with that.
Because it could end up costing you more money.
Because if they're retired military, for example, or if their spouse has, has covered their insurance already, you know, yeah, it could be a case to where, while you're paying more money.
That's the reason you only have two staffers that take insurance, so you would have to factor that in.
That's kind of why I, I wonder, I mean, if, if the path you take is to, to pay for the employee at that ninety percent rate and we, you know-
And is there a law that says you have to pay it at the ninety percent rate?
No, there's not.
You have to offer them the ability to purchase health insurance through you. That's how it used to be, anyway. I'll do the research.
This is a horrible, that's a hard thing to talk about, but it's one of those big dollar items.
It is.
You know, and, uh, yeah.
Absolutely.
And then, and, and the thing about it is, and I don't mean to keep harping on the contract and stuff, but the thing is, is when we get into a negotiation with whomever- But the thing is, is when we get into a negotiation with whomever we choose, the more information we have as a group, or as a board, I should say, the more we can sit there and offer a better contract to the person. Because the last thing that, in my opinion, we want to hear is wishy-washy in a way.
I agree totally.
I, I hate people that are wishy-washy. I'd rather be consistently a butt than wishy-washy about every damn thing.
Yep, he just said that.
I said it nice, though.
Yeah, you did. No, no, absolutely, absolutely.
I'm getting better.
All right, so medical, all right, so minor purchases. Oh, okay. Certainly, it is, it is currently, it is 7:25, it's 7:24. I was like, you know, I, old school watch, this doesn't apparently do it for me anymore. It is 7:24, and we are, 7:25, we're going to take a five-minute recess and reconvene at 7:30. Thank you.
Off the record.
Meeting, it is 7:00 PM. We are reconvening the, the meeting. We were on, let's see, I believe, 576, 2030, minor purchases.
So retail expense, that's going to be the swim caps, goggles, swim diapers. That may be a little higher number than we need, so I need to do a little research on our vendor and see, kind of make sure we're going to stay with that. Aerobics supplies, this is the same number we had this year. So far this year, we've only used, you know, like $30 for something. But there are some dumbbells and things like that for the aerobics that she will need to purchase next year, and we just kind of pushed that out a little bit. Cleaning and sanitation, I think that number is, I feel like that number's the same as last year.
And that's really supplies, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Well, you got pool supplies and pool chemicals further down.
So cleaning and sanitation would be more like the cleansers and whatnot.
Paper towels.
Janitorial.
Got you, just wanted to make sure.
First aid supplies, 300, that's going to be our Band-Aids, first aid kit stuff.
Got you.
We changed food for human consumption to event food, because I'm pretty sure we're not feeding the rats and the neighborhood. Pool supplies, we've brought down to 1050. It was significantly more than that on 2015, because we were fixing an air made by a previous employee. We may be able to minimize this even more. I know that Wendy has mentioned before in meetings, I tend to thrift store shop for things a lot, so if I'm there...
We love that.
And if I'm there, and I see binders or calculator tape, basically anything that we use as an office supply, I will get it there before I'm running to Office Max or Costco, so hopefully we can even minimize that a little more. Pool chemicals, that's unfortunately just about what they cost. Pool supplies, kind of the same deal.
What's the pool supplies?
I mean, it was $4,000. Last year, the budget was 500, and we spent $139.
Do you have those, like, pool noodles and...
No, because I think that's for, I'm not sure. We will have to check down exactly what that is. Down in swim team? We did move the NWA travel expense up as a swim team item, so that all of the swim team expenses are grouped together. This 3,000, we're hoping a large part of that could be offset by the parent travel contribution. They are also working diligently to establish a booster that I know one of their goals would be to help fill that gap for the travel expense.
They are meeting this Saturday for anybody who wants to be there.
Meat host expense, we put in $1,000, based on what we think we're going to come out for expense for this meet, and two meets next year. We feel that's a comfortable number. That, again, is something that if they could get the booster established, they may contribute.
And I, perhaps I got some, I just figured I'd throw this out there while we're talking about it. You know, I've had people tell me that back, you know, let's call it back in the day, that the expense was, was, was close to nothing, if not nothing, because most of the items were donated. And I would, I would certainly, and, and I don't...
I have heard that there used to be some sort of booster type thing that fell apart along the way, and I don't know all the circumstances involved.
Right, and, but what I'm talking about is, and, and this being a responsibility of, of an organized club, of parents or booster club or what have you, but that our, our meat hosting expenses were zero, because, you know, for example, McDonald's or whomever donated the ice, and, and someone else donated the coffee, and, and, but obviously, you have to seek those donations in order to gain them.
What is the meat host expense? Is that food?
This, no. This year, the meat host expense is strictly awards and four bakes of ice. The ribbons and the little turkeys, and four bakes of ice.
You know what we should do instead of ribbons? Do you know what they do at Marysville? They have, it's called the painterman invite, and they use paint sticks. Donated by the paint supply store. I mean, being creative like that, instead of like a piece of driftwood from the beach and...
You can't do that.
Forget that. That was Don Merrill that said.
You cannot remove driftwood from the beaches in Washington State.
I'm just a Marine.
From northern Indiana?
Denverian men, like.
Now, real quick, meat host expense, though, is when we have a meet here. So in addition to that, there, I mean, whatever we would pay out, hopefully, we would sit there and make enough money to sit there and definitely recover whatever we paid out.
I mean, I know that for this current, for this meet we have this weekend, we made more money from one club attending than what we will pay out.
Right. And I, and I know we have to list it, believe me, I know that, but...
No, as far as food for that, though, since Steve Raywell mentioned it, whoever mentioned it, as far as food went, you know, we, of course, bulked up on concessions, but that's a normal concession expense. All of the hospitality food was donated by swim team families. No strict funds went to that whatsoever.
Awesome, that's great.
They also got, we'll give the public shout out to Wendy Coffee, who donated coffee, and Hot Mark Pizza, who brought in a couple of pizzas for hospitality each day.
Awesome.
So they were able to get some.
No, that's fantastic. I'm really glad to know that.
Yeah, absolutely. Swim team software, that's a fix, it's $100 a month. If it doesn't go up, this is true. The organizational memberships, that is our team registration with USA Swimming PNS for the team, and then $50 for the master's program that is paid annually. USA registration, that should pretty much be a wash with the other. The only thing that would not be a wash in a perfect world would be the coach's USA registration fee, because the district does pay that for him.
And how much is that, or just roughly?
42, I think. Yeah, it's...
$42?
So like, one, one, yeah. So like, we're talking like 1% of that number?
Yeah, it's a, it's a very small amount, but I did want to mention it.
Okay, no, thank you.
Meekies paid the clubs, again, that should be a wash. We have the NWA swim accessories retail, again, those are going to be the things 62 for the coaches, USA. The swim team accessories, that's, again, going to be things that we purchase for resale. So like, we have the swim caps right now that have the NWA logo. And I do not know why the NWA apparel is not showing in either place, but I did have those separated out.
No, that's cool, that's great. This is really, sorry, before we move on, this is really great, and thank you so much. I mean, it's, it's very clear, and it's much easier to kind of see it all together. So, thank you.
This is the way that my brain operates.
It's great.
And I like to have that level of detail, so...
No, it's, it's perfect, thank you so much.
Vehicle maintenance, we have down to the 500. I think that's about where we were this year.
This year, wasn't there a brake job that needed to be done?
Yes.
And did that get done?
No, I'm not sure.
But that, but that was part of, if, if the 500 was what we budgeted, it was supposed to include the brake job, as I recall.
I think you budgeted 1,000, and we were looking at taking it down to...
Because maybe we didn't have the brake job done.
Now, one question with the maintenance and stuff that's looked at, does that also consider, I mean, there's windshield wipers you have to replace every so often, there's tires that have to be, and I know our vehicles aren't driven, you know, 30,000 miles a year.
They're driven very rarely.
But the thing is, with the maintenance, we still need to sit there and have some kind of budget for that, so when them expenses do come, you know, the money is, is sitting there for that.
I, I think that if I, I believe that one of the ideas on the table, although it has not been discussed by the board, it has not been dispositioned by the board, but one of the ideas would be to relieve ourselves of much of that responsibility. And instead, what some of that budget of money would need to go to would be travel reimbursement instead, right? Would be mileage.
No, 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 I'm talking about, well, you need to change tires.
No, no, but, but what I'm, what I'm trying to say, sorry, I'll say it a different way, is, we'd really like to potentially, the, the vehicles that never get driven, that still need maintenance, that perhaps it is a smarter move for us to get rid of them. Again, has not been discussed by the board.
Right, no, I understand that, but the thing is, is we have one vehicle here, or 50 vehicles here, tires and stuff like that still need to be changed on that one vehicle. And so we're still keeping, we're still keeping one vehicle here, at least.
Since we don't have a schedule for replacing the boiler, my guess is, we don't have a schedule for replacing anything on vehicles.
But again, that's policy that we need to be looking at.
Yes, I agree.
And our, our revised budget for vehicle maintenance was $2,000 for 2015, and it looks like we are...
I think?
That, that was our, that was our original, that was our, well, not original, but that was our mid-year...
Mid-year modification.
Yes. Our mid-year modification.
So the 500 is, is what we originally had budgeted before, we said, oh, we need the brake job?
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay, look a little more on here, so I get to where we actually are. So so far this year, we spent $315, and I think that that is why she lowered it down. As far as the district vehicles, presently, they get used, the one vehicle gets used to transport kayaks when there's a kayaking course. I believe that Matt may use one of the district vehicles on Saturdays to go do the dump run for the dog park. Other than that, everyone uses their own vehicle for district business, so, and they're not, most people are not reimbursed for mileage. Like Joanna and I, if we're on district business, we just stay clocked in for it. So you're not going to have a whole lot of vehicle expense of stuff wearing out from use, because you're right, nobody's using a vehicle 30,000 miles a year.
But I'm just saying, you know, that needs to be budgeted, that's all I'm saying.
No, absolutely, probably, probably 500 is probably not sufficient. It was 2,000, and so probably somewhere in the middle would...
Well, again, depending on the number of vehicles, because we mentioned we go out by getting rid of one vehicle, and I think we have three, or four, something like that.
Four.
But it was talking about getting rid of one vehicle, at least.
Right.
Which could be more.
Right.
Yeah, I think there may be some conversation of two vehicles.
Good.
There probably needs to be a policy in place on employees using their own cars. You know what I'm saying? So moving forward is something that might, might need to be brought up. I mean, if there were an accident while they're on the clock, or...
We can surely equal you looking into that.
Or whatever the case, you know? We don't need to talk about that now, but going forward, I mean, I would like to know, and maybe we should look at, you know, establishing something.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I would actually expect, as hourly employees, that they would be doing both, as well. Meaning that there would be, it would be, there would be reimbursement as well as way, as well as way of...
Yeah, if you're driving to Mountain Road and using your own vehicle, you should be reimbursed for the fuel or whatever.
Yeah, you should get mileage, because just because you're getting paid, doesn't mean you're not using your car. Because you shouldn't get paid the same amount as when you're driving your desk, as when you're driving your car.
And it, but, but I think you're right, in terms of a policy, so, you know, every, every place that I've ever worked, it was, it was basically whatever over and above your daily commute.
It's amazing what you guys are doing, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, but we want to make sure that we're compensated, that you're being compensated correctly for that, and that we're accounting for that.
And I don't know how far back that issue goes, because that is how it was explained to me when I started, was that you could either get reimbursed for mileage, or you could just get clocked in.
But the thing is, no matter how it was being done before, doesn't mean that it's correct. And, and that's, that's just something that we need to start correcting to get, you know, get it correct.
For example, as a government employee, if I, if I have to travel to Indiana, home of the freak. No, but, but anyway, just throw that in.
But only northern Indiana, right?
Yeah, I would be central. I would be paid to drive to the Seattle Airport, I'd be paid not only mileage, but my time.
Well, as an hourly, as someone who's hourly compensated, sorry.
So Julie, they would like to give us a nice Christmas bonus.
Just saying.
Uh, no.
Anyway.
It's, it's what's, I, I believe it's, I mean, I believe it's actually the law. I mean, I could be overstepping here, but part of it is, is, is it's not an either-or. I don't, you know? It's, it's, if you're using your personal vehicle, that there is, you are allowed to be compensated for that. And, and by the way, I don't think anyone at this table would ever say, go ahead and clock out to do that. You're, if you're doing district business, you are, you should be being paid. Absolutely.
I'll talk to Sean, see about putting this on the agenda for our board.
The one thing to also remember is, nothing else, you can look at your taxes as far as writing that off until we get this going, because you can't do that.
There you go, that's a good point, too, yeah.
Taxes, you can use it for your taxes.
If you aren't, if you're not being reimbursed, exactly.
Yes, so, but that's something we need to address to get, to get corrected.
No, that's a good point. That's a good point, Cecil, thank you.
I have one every now and then.
No, you do, you have a lot of them. It's just, you know, there are those things you forget about, that it's like, oh, right.
One a day, I've worked with things for ten years. You can count them, it's like clockwork.
Wow, so I guess at this rate, don't expect one from him until next week or so.
I'm not going to work for next week. I'm done with my job.
All righty.
All righty, so, did we, did we finish with, wait, so kayak equipment?
We, so concession expense, we bumped up a little bit, just for increased revenue, and we'll have to order a little more. Small tools and equipment, I don't remember what all she had, he didn't in there, do you?
Because, I mean, the, the thing is, we should, once you sit there and buy a tool, unless it breaks and stuff like that, there, this should be, should be something that drops, I mean, it should be...
I think the reason it's 800 is because it was 800 this year to buy the one thing they bought, which was a tie chart or something.
Infinity, Infinity Time Starter.
I did.
We can find out specifically what was in mind for that. Kayak equipment, I know that that goes toward, like, the tide charts and whatnot that he purchases, first classes, little minor things that the kayaks need, maybe you can, but I do, because, you know, I don't do those things.
Does he have to buy new ones every year?
He has some supplies every year that he has to purchase, and he usually waits until toward the end of the year to do it. IT monthly, that is just what we anticipate our contract amount being. We've broken it out, down to computer maintenance for the additional charges.
I'm going to just go back for one second, and I just wanted to point out that, at least the way that we currently have this budget, effectively kayaking breaks even. effectively kayaking breaks even. And that, and I, and I point that out, I think, for a very specific reason, which is, and, and I'm not trying to kvetch about what, but, but that, that at least based on the calculations that we were given at the time that we decided to purchase brand-new kayaks, it was, this, this more than brings in enough money, not only does it make a profit, but it makes a profit that pay, that would pay for those kayaks. I'm not trying to relive things, but I, I think that's going to be, for me, there's a tough pill to swallow there, to say, this is, that, that it may break even. That's a much different story, and, and it probably has, at least for me and my decision-making, there's a, there's kind of a, it, it has to make some money, some way, one way or the other, and I, I don't know what that means, I'm not saying, like, ultimatum me, it just, it doesn't balance for me right now, because it only breaks even. So, I'm just throwing that out there.
And I don't know where she exactly came up with the revenue number for the kayaks for the 2016. You know, my, my thought process for a lot of these items is that our promotion has been so nonexistent, that if we really promote our programs and all the things that we can offer, that we will see some natural increases in that as a result. Those numbers are kind of hard for me to, I, I want there to be a basis for them, and not just like, oh, I think we can make an extra $5,000, because we're going to do this great thing. I want some harder facts to go along with it before I commit to it comfortably. So, when we're providing her input, that's kind of, it holds me back sometimes from...
I know, what we've got for January 1st, October 15th of 2015 is $5,590 that we've made in kayaks, our kayak lessons, and then we still have $9,000 budgeted for it, so $4,000 is a big difference.
Right, exactly.
It's a big drop, is what I mean.
No, exactly, and that's part of what I'm, that's part of where, what I'm, you know, that's, that's part of why I brought it up. Because it's so far different from what we thought when we made that decision, that I'm, again, I'm not trying to relive that decision, because it is what it is, but...
Well, I'm just saying, what we said we made, I mean...
There's almost 2,000.
Why is it dropping?
There's almost 2,000 that has been billed, but we haven't received payment for.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but this is what we've been bill, this is what we already received payment for, is in this here, correct?
Assuming, okay, going back to the...
No, no, no.
No, I, I know that, but last week it was 3,000.
Yeah, that's one that we have to look at.
Right, so, I mean, last week it was only, it was only 3,690.
I understand that, but this here is 5,800, I'm sorry.
I, I know that, but I'm...
But that's all I'm saying, is, that's what...
And a week ago, it was $2,000 less than that, I just, we, we don't know what that discrepancy is.
The biggest mistake with the kayaks, was us not understanding surplus goods and how to sell them.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
That's where we really didn't understand. We were shooting in the dark.
And I think, yeah, overall, I feel like he had a few less people in his side classes than he has previously had, and not quite so much of the extra classes outside of the college this year. And, you know, as far as the numbers that you had based your stuff on, those were numbers that unfortunately aren't really optimistic to pull from previous...
Understood, and, yeah, I'm...
That. So, I, you know, I don't have 100% confidence in those numbers, those were what we were able to pull to give you, based on how they've been entered.
And, and I understand, and the reason, the reason I bring that up is exactly what you just said about confidence in the numbers, because knowing what I know now, you know, and kind of experiencing this for, the ripple effect for part of this, you know, year, is that I'm going to always personally want us to side conservatively, and be, and be pleasantly surprised.
Absolutely.
Rather, right, I mean, that's...
Absolutely, well, and I always tend to underestimate revenue and overestimate expenses, because I figure then you come up somewhere closer to where you want to be. And, I don't know, I have confidence in the numbers that I put together, frankly, but the previous existing ones, it's, it's much more challenging to you.
I get you totally.
Because even when you look at where things were coded in the old system...
It might not reflect accurately either the revenue or the expenses for certain activity, understand.
Perfect example, I'm wrong track a tiny bit, you pull up the PNL, and you look at the expenses, travel expenses or miscellaneous expenses, and if you click into those, into detail, there's NWA expenses hidden in there. In miscellaneous or other, there are swim team award expenses hidden in there, that clearly should have belonged under swim team. All these things like that, when you look at that, but it's...
So, and the, the point being that, as, as we move over time, that we will have greater...
We will have more confidence in our numbers.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, thank you. Okay, so, are we, so we finished with minor purchases, correct?
We are, yeah, we're down on other services.
Great, yeah, that's correct, yes, thank you.
Point of sale system, that is pretty much what we pay per month, it did go up a little bit this year. I, like, partway through the year, it went up.
January, February, and then March.
March it went up, I think, $20? I don't remember. Not aware of another fee increase with them, but it would have happened. Um, including background checks, we have in there at 400. That will depend somewhat on staff turnover and how extensive you go on the background checks. The credit card processing, we have it in at 9,000 right now. We did, in fact, we just finally got our new terminal installed up front, we switched credit card processing companies. The estimate is a 10 to 25% savings per month on processing fees.
Good.
That's great.
So, it's going to take a little while to see how that all really washes out, so that number we may be able to lower. And it's also very nice that there now, we will be able to take American Express and Apple Pay, so those are new options for payments for our patrons. We also have a backup phone line, so if our internet goes down, we will still be able to process credit.
Good.
So, those are two huge improvements.
Yeah.
Um, coffee machine maintenance, do we know where that adds in?
Well, accounting, if you can go.
Oh, I skipped, I skipped a couple things, because I have a different little line on my paper, sorry.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
And she left the accounting there, just for someone to be able to come in and review the books for this again, whether it be the same individual or someone different. The alarm monitoring, you know, barring more emergencies, we can probably bring that number down some, now that we have a better understanding. Bank fees, do we know whether, what that includes?
Are we paying bank fees, or was that the credit card fees?
They were linked together previously, I believe.
Our, our credit card is from, we do have a bank, so if we have any bank fees, it'll go.
Real quick, uh, here at the bottom, you have $51,000 for the total. Why I ask that is because you've also got in there, you, you just said it under IT monthly, it was $5,000.
No, that's not the total for a year, that's a monthly total.
Okay, so, okay, all these here are monthly, I mean, are...
The annual total.
The annual total, that's, that's the IT monthly contract totals, $5,000 for a year.
Gotcha, I just, the way you said it for, I was like, oh, something's not adding up here.
We can't afford that.
We don't pay $5,000 a month for IT.
No kidding. Thank you, though.
Computer maintenance, the 4,200, so that does include a Barracuda backup, any other maintenance the computers may need.
How much is that Barracuda backup?
It's 1,200 for a year.
Thanks.
With any luck, the computers will keep operating. We do have a lot of, we have a mix of newer machines and older machines. The machines up in the fishbowl right now, two of them are newer machines that were donated to the facility. We have one new one back in the back office that was donated to the facility. That leaves four other computers that are on the ancient side of things, so we never quite know what we're going to get. Our IT has been fairly successful at adding memory and rebuilding components and software to keep us up and running. I like them. Um, dues, memberships, tuitions, she has in here for, I believe, three or four people to go to a CPO class, figuring the new director would need to.
CPO?
Oh, CPO again.
Certified pool operator.
That's right, that's right.
I'm just gonna, I'll just say outright, I, I disagree with this. Um, that's, so we're doubling this number from this year, in terms of that, that's my personal opinion, I know I'm, I'm reserving my opinion about a lot of things. I, I disagree with that, because I don't think it's necessary, but we will come back to that.
I believe that the director, the way it currently stands, the director has to, and Matt has to. Beyond there, I think it's a, you know...
It does say that in the handles right now.
And, and that's, and that's fine, right, but if we're saying that we're sending extra people to that, I don't, I don't think that that's... And, I mean, is that, so Matt has to do that annually?
Matt has to do it periodically, I think it's a...
At least two years, two or three.
Two or three, something like that, and he is coming close to where he may need to.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, I think that also does include a little bit in there, there's a third cookbooks class that Joanne and I have not taken yet, that if we can get into that at some point.
Could I ask a favor of, could, can we, can we further at some point in time, but break this out further? I, I think training, I think there's a difference between memberships and training, and I'd really like to...
Between, well, between memberships and tuition, for sure.
Right, but I mean, to, I don't, I guess I don't know the difference between tuitions and trainings, I mean, to me, it's, it's training.
Well, tuition would be tuition to go to the college and take a course, training is, you know, you're kicking around in the pool, learning safety techniques, or teaching a class more effectively, I think that's where...
Um, okay, if we want to distinguish it that way, that's fine, I, it doesn't matter to me, to me, that's staff training, it's just, it's administrative staff training, but we can call it, as long as it's clear what it is, I'm, I don't care.
Yeah, dues, memberships, and tuition is throwing too much stuff together.
I think it should be dues and memberships, and then tuition separate, because grading is already somewhere else.
Yep.
Okay, I can fix that. And I would really like to fix this as we're approving, as you guys are approving this budget, because then, like, my whole goal is for what we produce on PNL to match what you guys approve as a budget, because these last months of budget nightmare with the Excel document, I do not agree.
Yes, and thank you, because it's, it's easier for, it's easier for everybody, I mean...
Oh, I'm sorry, am I forgetting to be nice?
No, it's a lot easier for me to look over.
I'm just trying.
You're, you're trying to make your life easier, and you're also making our life easier as well, I, I think we all get that.
Having to switch back and forth to the two forms is, is annoying for us as well.
It is a headache.
Yeah, got it.
Um, the health and safety, American Red Cross, she is still investigating why there was such a disparity between the numbers for this year. She has some theories she's working on, so she's still researching that. But this 3,500 would be the fees that we pay to American Red Cross to run their swim lesson program, certification fees for people that take the course.
And most, that money is all going to be paid to us, right?
That should all, that should all come in as part of what they pay to take the course. One of the things that we're looking at on the revenue side is to break out, so that it's entered in separately, the course cost, the certification cost, and the material cost. So that moving forward, there would be a clearer picture of where that's all coming from and going.
Okay.
The HVAC system, landscape maintenance is our contract with New Leaf. We left 5,000 in there for legal.
Wait, so how is that different from the money, from the, from the money for 10 hours per week of a gardener?
Um, gardener, he does, he rakes, he weeds flower beds, he plants flowers, applies fertilizer, New Leaf comes and does our mowing.
Okay, just at this facility, or?
Ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
Ballpark, yeah. The legal, she left it at 5,000, and you know what, this might be the other thing that she had intended to talk about. I know that she did have, I talked with someone at Nathan Manning's office that had been briefed on the district and was just anticipating rolling over to take Nathan's place, but all of her point guys in more on that.
Yeah, we, we will need to, we will need, we will need to establish who, who the new district attorney is going to be, probably, right?
Because the one thing is, one, we do look, we get the contract going before it's signed, it needs to be looked over to make sure that nothing's changed.
And, um, I guess I'll expand a tiny bit more, I know what she indicated was that she had reached out to several other law firms that would require a large upfront retainer, and this person within Nathan Manning's practice is willing to just assume the same type of arrangements that we had with him, where it's so much per hour when we need him.
Okay.
So, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
Payroll processing, that's calculated based on where we think we'll be with payroll, in relationship to where we were this year.
So, is that, is, do we pay them a percentage? Is that, is that how the...
I don't know, I, I know I get a bill each pay period, it comes in with a check.
It, it just, it...
I can look into how much it...
It, it's just a lot of money, and I'm not saying that it's not, I mean, it's, when you, relative to the amount of payroll, it's, it seems like it's about 2 to 3%, and, and I don't know...
And they also do our LNI for the quarter, quarters of LNI.
Can you ask them, do you have someone on the phone that you can talk to? Just ask them, what's, what's our fee based on, and they'll, hopefully can tell you, and then we'll...
We might have a contract from them as well.
And so, when you say they submit our LNI, but that, for, but for us, that comes out of elsewhere? Meaning that, that's not, the actual LNI is not included in this number?
No, actual LNI is included.
Just want to be clear, got you. That is another duty of theirs, is to submit that.
Labor and industry, that's, you know, somebody that's laid off, or hurt, or all that kind of...
And we have to pay a tax, right?
And, you know, it does happen here.
Yeah.
Past control of that 400 dollars, I think that that is just our standard contract amount with them. The email, $600 a year, we pay $50 a month for the email accounts we have. I think that went up slightly when we went to each commissioner having their own, but that is our current rate. Advertising, we have it 2,500, with the hope that we will be able to put that more toward promoting the district and less toward filling empty positions on staff.
Yes.
What's up?
Because a large amount of that really went toward director's job postings, the kayak postings, stuff like that, and we would really rather see that money go more toward promoting our programs and services. Internet and phone, we have it at 3,960 right now, Joanne and I did a little research, we had Frontier out, they checked our lines. We have been paying most of the last two years for two lines that go to nowhere, one of them longer than that. We are currently locked into a contract with them until January, so, we're gonna, well, Joanne's going to get back on the phone with them and try and get an estimate of what we can reduce our bill down to, when we can pull those lines off.
Fantastic. Thank, thank you, that's, I mean, thank you for finding that, and thank you for pursuing it.
Going back to the advertising, have we ever sent, like, like, let's say, like, the week before, or whatever, new signups to all of the elementary schools in town? As long as there's a disclaimer on that, this is not associated with the Oak Harbor School District, blah, 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 blah.
For swim school, or?
Yeah, for swim school, to where every kid in the Oak Harbor Elementary, or in the Oak Harbor School District, even if it was at the start of the school year, bam, to where the kid goes home and says, Mom, Dad, this is what I want to do, yay!
I know, they get into the schools with whale tails, that they give a swim school thing out, I don't think beyond there, you know, that's...
Just looking at advertising, I think that would cost to do that.
And it's in all some ID, um, whole papers, you know.
Because you're talking about, like, five schools, I mean, even if you...
You're talking about...
Five elementary schools, I believe, if you were just targeting, you know, like, say, first through fourth grade, or third grade, or whatever, but to, to put out X amount, to where the kids would, would take them home, and, I don't know.
Will the schools let us do that?
Yes, they make you put a disclaimer on it.
They make you put a disclaimer on it.
Yeah, Cub Scout says, Little League does, and soccer does it, everybody has it.
And also, does, do we look at Channel 10, because it's free advertising?
I know that Erica had it on her list, I don't know if she has gotten to it yet, but I know it was definitely on her list.
Especially for the, the Silver Sneakers, because a lot of older people watch Channel 10.
Well, Silver Sneakers, military, you know, with their, their fees being reimbursed, swim meet, the NWA, I mean, everything that we do here.
And we had pretty good luck with our reporter that's assigned to us from previous times, for her getting the boards in the paper, like, when we did the Silver Sneakers event, and some other things. You know, as long as we reach out to her, she's happy to do it and get the information from us.
And don't forget, there's that other paper that I dropped off here, but we have to write the article, submit the pictures, and all that, but, that's free.
But still, that's just a little...
Back to electricity, Julie, bam!
Were we too electricity? I thought we were postage and cell phones still.
I don't know.
They were, but they're basic, whatever, I mean, they're unchanged from year to year. Travel, we have $500 for other travel, not related to NWA, and they're separate. The insurance, $65,000 is what we'll have a year, that gets paid into November next year again.
And I would just go back to the...
We'll have the November 15 one, and then it'll be 16.
I would just go back to the, the travel one, it, you know, would be looking at, again, reimbursements, you know?
So, that would be mileage?
Ensure that that's inclusive of, of, of that, of what that, that recurring travel is.
You know that you go once a week to the county, how many miles is that?
Yeah, you guys already have the kind of an idea, so, start throwing that together, put that in there also. And don't, and I don't know what the daily travel, I mean, the mileage travel is right now for reimbursements, 50 cents, 25, 30.
52, something like that.
But that's a good, you know, average to go with.
So, now we're back to utilities.
They are what they are.
They are what they are, they're based on this year's, they, did we put an increase in here at all? So, yeah, so we may need to increase fees a little bit, assuming that the fees for that stope will go up, we have not done that yet with those. One thing, so right now, it's not showing garbage anywhere, because that rolls into our water, water sewers, that all comes together.
But, okay, back to electricity, though, if our actuals are 15 and 5... What's that?
We had...
Tell us, do tell.
Yes, there, there was, we were not receiving a bill from them.
Oh, good.
Because their transmitter broke, so, because they don't have meter mains that go around anymore, they were being sent wireless. Well, that transmitter broke, so we were getting billed, but they, the billing people weren't getting the readings. So, they put us on a payment plan till the end of the year, which is why our actual 24 was nowhere near that 40 that was budgeted for.
Oh, so as of, as of the, the current one, sorry, I'm, I'm swimming in things here, so I was looking at the previous one.
The, you know, for...
The current, the one you gave us. The current, the one you gave us today. Okay, so it's twenty-four, so in that week we've paid nine thousand. Wow, mercy.
So, but we were, we, the last bill I paid was April. So May, June, July, August.
So we, so is that, so that forty is still-
That forty is still forty.
Is a good number, as it were, um, around that. Okay, I, I think what- Go ahead.
I've called them because I, I call them every time we get the bill now. Is this the right bill?
Yeah, sure.
Because the last time I called, they said, oh yeah, you don't have to pay this three thousand. I said, are you sure? Because it is on our bill that I'm supposed to pay three thousand. And then he said, well, no, because the bill is, you really only need to pay three something. So that's what I paid. And then when I got the next bill, it says you owe plus three, why? So I called again and they said, no, 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 this is the correct bill that you have to pay. So that was the night that went out.
And the, the reason I anticipated asking about it before I saw the actuals was simply because part of, um, that, um, uh, part of the software purchase that we had made, the assumption was that it would help drive our, um, energy bills down. That was part of the discussion and that was part of, while we know that it, it, we realized other efficiencies. Am I wrong? Am I, did I make that up?
You did not make that up. That was, that was what we were-
Okay, and, and so that's, it's, it's a consideration, to me, it's, I think I expected to see this number go down even if slightly, or stay, at least stay stable.
Maybe it may well stay stable. Um, that may be one of the things that when we start looking at the increases, we calculate in that expected decrease and it ends up being pretty similar.
And I would think that there would just need to be some data that is actually, that actually says we're using less energy because of this. Again, just trying to revisit things that we said were gonna be efficiencies and, and see where we're at with those.
Do we have accurate reporting from them now?
From who?
Yes. Okay, so we would be able to see that. Clover Valley Park, um, we put two thousand in there for maintenance and repair out there. I think that the group that had come to the meetings had said they needed around fifteen hundred for a fence and then I know the two thousand doesn't cover the entirety of what they had said they needed, but this was a starting point for us on it.
Exactly, that's the, I was-
I bet that was the amount that they asked for.
I think it was twenty-five. It was, it was close to two thousand.
It was right around there.
But I was really glad-
Fifteen hundred for the fence and then there was some other stuff.
Yeah, there was some other stuff, but I'm really glad to see something that's put in there. And I will pass that on to them that there is.
Well, I wouldn't yet because we haven't approved it.
I know that, but it's discussion.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's in our current draft.
It's put in there.
Yes.
Cause they asked me about this also today, and I was like, well-
Every time you see them, right?
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, I misspoke when I said, we were just talking about the two thousand fifteen.
Twenty-two hundred is what they asked for.
Um, the repair and maintenance, the twenty-three, um, three thirty includes three thirty for the water dip test. Twenty-three thousand for the rest of it. I'm not entirely sure how she intended that to be broken down. I know her and Matt had had some conversation.
Is that a normal amount, or is this gonna include one of those big ticket items on our list?
I think this includes the lift. I do not know if it includes-
I don't think you'd break that down, that would be nice.
I don't know what else it might include, but I know that she did calculate the lift in here when she looked at those.
Yeah, make sure you get a breakdown of what is in that, please.
And some of it, I believe, is a little bit unknown because we set aside a certain amount for, my gosh, the shower broke again.
And that's fine too.
Yeah, so I know some of it, you know, it's just kind of random stuff happens. Every day, something random happens.
Toilet's off the wall again.
Yes, things like that. Um, employment advisory service, we put five hundred in. I don't believe that had been used prior to this year when the nine hundred was used, but, um, just in case there is somebody with an issue. She has thirty-five thousand for election services. Because it's actually gonna be twenty-sixteen when we pay for the things that are up on the ballot this time. And there will be, I think the levy has to get paid for.
The levy gets paid for beforehand? That's something that board's gonna need to decide too going forward. It's what Craig Carlson's done before is, he ran that levy in the spring, understanding that if it failed, you could run it in the fall. So that's, going forward, that's a thing to think about, is how you wanna approach the levy. If you, cause you can run it in either the spring or in the fall or both, so.
So I think those two things combined, that's what those numbers were. And then, uh, the paternity funds. That's a pretty steady number. You know, my goal, of course, because the front is, you know, kind of my corner of the world here. You know, my goal is to have that be much lower because I want people to come and be satisfied and happy, but I think this is realistic. The special events program, seventeen hundred. So that's going to include, um, both the material costs for hosting special events, doing special things here. Um, you know, where we're intending to make money, it's also going to include, like the Silver Sneakers event, we did informational fairs. What's that, April Fool's Day? Yeah, things like that. The porta potty for, I guess the dog park now.
Well, it's for both, but.
Well, dog park. Now that is pretty much it. So it leaves us about a seventeen thousand dollar deficit that we have to try and plug away at.
And it doesn't include anything into reserves whatsoever?
It does, it includes the fifteen thousand.
No, it, it includes paying ourselves back.
It includes two thousand.
Okay, okay. I mean, that's, I, I just, I don't wanna overstate that as, as, as mu- It, it includes thirteen thousand of paying ourselves back, plus an additional two thousand dollars.
Uh, since we're talking, you mentioned the dog park and the ball fields, real quick, something that really bothers me out there. There was a boy, a young man, sailor, got hurt out there three years ago, cut, got cut pretty bad on the fence. So they put in that yellow fence topping. And there's a section missing about, they never put it there because they ran out. And it's about fifteen feet. I don't know if you could like put a bug in Matt's ear, I mean, if you could, maybe the city of Oak Harbor have, have, have an extra piece or wherever they could find it. I look at it, every time I drive by there, it's like, really, seriously? It's like, anyway, it's like I didn't paint the door. You know, painted the whole house, but not the door, ran out of paint. We'll go buy some more paint, anyway. Yeah, just, fuck. We are like some kid who'll get out there and that's the section, he'll try to catch a fly ball and get hurt. There we are, so.
The one thing also I don't see on here, is talking with the dog park and the ball fields out there, is, um, garbage.
Oh, good point.
That's garbage, right?
Well, I mean, I mean, there's, yeah, there's the weekly, the monthly, however you got it. You know, whenever some big event goes on, you know, you have to take garbage out.
Big events, he, like, you know, big trashy events where it's a lot, like the lawn mower and the couch, you know, he ran straight to the dump with those. I feel like for the smaller, like just weekly pickups, that he might have a pro trash here. I'm not sure on that.
That's just a question like that, cause I mean, even-
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but that's a cost that's out there that we need to know about, and-
Absolutely. I made an effort, um, so that I can check on that. And then I'm also missing on the revenue side, I know we've had discussion about, um, utilities at all park and the ball field has money making, um, things, either with like little dog trainings. We would like to put those in, we just need to kind of get a better idea of what we might be doing and a number that could come inside.
I would, I would include those in special events.
And see, I wouldn't include them at all because we don't have a projection and we don't have a policy. So, but the, the point being that let's not budget to spend money that we haven't even figured out how much we think it is yet. Let's, let's figure out our budget without it, and then when and if those things happen, we can, we can allot accordingly. That's, that's the way, I mean, again, I would play this really conservatively. I will just say that for myself. I, first of all, I appreciate, not only do I appreciate the amount of work that went into this, but, um, thank you for explaining it so well. Uh, thank you, you know, thank you. You did, you did a wonderful job. You clearly are very, you guys are clearly very close to a lot of this and, and we really appreciate that. Not to take away from that, the, so my comment about the two thousand dollars for reserves is because, um, that, that on certain days keeps me up at night. Um, and, and that has to do with not only meeting our payroll, and, and I'm not saying this to you directly, I'm actually saying this to the board. So for me, moving forward, I will personally be trying to champion how we get more in there. Because, um, as it was put to me by someone else, we are currently living out of our checking account. And we can't actually, that is, that is not, um, this is no fault, um, this is not said to, to fault the hard work that you guys do at all. It's actually said to make it such that, um, it's not so precarious and wondering if we're going to in certain months even meet our bills.
Absolutely.
That, that's the point behind it. Um, and, and I'm, I'm saying that just because looking forward at how we get a budget that's approved, I will personally, and I'll, I'll move around numbers and play with numbers myself. Um, not to undermine anybody, but to try to figure out how we might make that happen. Um, that's really, I, I can say personally, that's really important to me. And, uh, so anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm not asking you guys to, to do anything differently, I'm just kinda putting it out there.
Can we talk about this sheet just a tiny bit?
Oh, sure, so the assumptions thing.
Real quick before we do. I, I may have missed it and stuff, or maybe you put it somewhere else, but what do we pay for city water, garbage, sewer?
That's all included in the water.
Patron parts?
It's all included in the water part, with our garbage, all that. Well, yeah, this is one bill.
Cause you get water through garbage, that's one bill.
Okay, I got you, I got you. Thanks.
Yeah, it's included as one bill.
Cause I know that's going up as we all know.
Did anyone, remember that guy that came to the, the, um, guy with the beard from the dog park group? He came and he said, we have a-
Half inch line?
The pipe, the pipe, yeah.
The pipe's too big.
Yes.
Has anyone looked into that, that, I, once I listened to it over again, then it sort of made sense to me what he said. I had no clue the night it happened, but when I re-listened to it, it's like, okay, now I understand what he's saying. And I, I don't understand why that's something that we, do you know if that's been looked at?
I do not.
Yeah, that's something Matt actually needs to talk to Paul about.
Are you going over the assumptions?
We are going to, yeah, break it.
Let's do it.
So again, you know, we had a ten percent fee increase across the board for, and she says across the board. My understanding of it when we were touching those numbers was not necessarily across the board because swim school, InWAC, and I'd say there's one other thing that we were looking at more than that when we were calculating these numbers, but, um, that was kind of the base we used on that from there. Ten percent increase due to, um, you know, increased patronage. Um, through a variety of factors there. With aquatics, she figures that she can de-rease, decrease the aerobics payroll, um, because she's picking up a lot of the admin duties that the aerobics coordinator had previously done.
Do you know, do you know how much we paid, um, I forget what her name is.
Michelle.
Michelle, how much we paid for her to do administrative duties vice her time in the pool?
We can find that.
Did, did, was that something that, that's what I'm asking, is like, was that?
I know-
How was that taken into account if the number was not figured?
I don't think it was separated.
I, I, she did not, well, it was separated and it wasn't. I know that, like, it's not separated even payroll purposes that you would see, but we can go back and look because we don't have to go to classes. She taught how many hours a week she was in the water, and we can compare that to her overall payroll.
Or was it?
Um, but basically, I think the way Erica looked at this is she knows that Michelle was spending an hour or two or three throughout the week, some days more, some days less.
Or is it that she said, we have this many of aerobics and hours of aerobics instruction. I don't have to pay somebody else to do it, therefore this is all that we're gonna pay for aerobics.
What she was looking at was strictly the additional for admin that Michelle was doing. Um, I can work on getting you a better, some sort of definition or something like that. Um, she figures we'll both have more time to devote, to devote to promoting programs along with the new director, um, to give us some guidance there. That will help, um, with increasing the revenue and whatnot and bringing new people in. Um, I know she has some plans to get into more schools, um, with the Whale's Tales and possibly expand it even beyond just because the third grades they normally go in and talk to. Get out there that way. She has decreased payroll for hourly aquatic director assistant. You know, she's fully anticipating being back in the fishbowl full-time, not needing to utilize that senior guard in that role so much. InWAC, she has continued eliminating the assistant coaching position. Um, we have established in the five dollar family fee. You know, that could bump up a little bit even to fully cover travel. I don't see if you had suggested seven fifty. But yeah, I think the families would support that, um, just from the chit chat.
It would, and, and it takes that negative, uh, sting out of the public when they look at that, question it.
And then it's a set thing, they know to expect it. No, I think the Booster Club has the potential to do great things, but I think this is something we can do on paper that the public can really see. Decreasing the admin costs by forty-five percent, again, that's because a lot of the mess has been cleaned up, um, accounts have been verified. We have a really strong system in place as far as when we build things out to families. And just the whole process, so it flows much more smoothly now. Um, we're tightening controls up, I already did on the InWAC, um, USS one registrations. Nothing is sent off to PNS to register them until we have collected the payment.
Cool.
That's so much better.
Yeah. Um, meet fees, it's a little trickier because those don't get billed out until after they have participated. For the most part, our families are very good. I would say ninety-five percent of them pay them in a timely manner.
And then that's where we get the late fees, when they don't pay.
When they don't pay in a timely manner, yes. For the cashier admin side of things, um, I'm looking at a plan where we would use volunteers to help at certain times upfront. The busy swims in the summer where I really need eight sets of hands up there. Um, we could have a volunteer come in strictly to check ID cards and make sure people are signing in on the right clipboards. Right now, we pay an extra person to be there to do that. Um, first night of swim lessons is another really good example. We're stopping everyone coming through the door to make sure that they have paid for their lessons because they can reserve a spot without paying. And we had people that were slipping through without paying for pool sessions sometimes because instructors don't know. So we've been having a second person there to check that and direct them back to the counter if they need to pay. That's something, it doesn't use any district money, they're not handling our cash or finances or records. And we can have them, they're not doing a little checklist at the door. And also pointing people in the direction of where to go. We have a lot of people that are coming for lessons for the first time, but where do we go now? You know, it's all big and big for them. Um, so definitely looking at those options.
Could you, could you add to that assumption, sorry, could you just update that assumption as looking at using volunteers? Just because I think it's, it's a, it's a definite difference. Thank you.
Streamlining the training process to reduce the training shifts required for new employees up there. Right now, they get quite a few just because there's so many interesting things that happen at the front and trying to get it so that they experience as many of them as possible. And we're looking at doing some things that we're role-playing with them a little bit rather than leading for the scenario to occur. We're, we're also kind of tightening the hiring process for it and what I'm looking for, that way people are more likely to be a good fit once they get into the role. Again, I'll have more time to promote the programs and make sure that our editor going out is really fine-tuned. Increase concession sales due to increased demand and just offering new things that people are actually looking for and listening to the patrons. We've really been able to improve those numbers a lot. This last one, tightening controls on shift changes, that's going to be my hardest one on my goal list probably. But I'm looking at cutting the, um, the turnover time in half. It doesn't save that much over the course of a year, but you know, five hundred bucks is five hundred bucks to go somewhere else.
It is, yeah.
And if nothing else, I'm hoping it will dissuade some of the lolligating and not starting closing procedure until, you know, they see the person walk through the door for their next shift. Maintenance, we budgeted the shutdown. Um, which, and that is something that you guys would need to approve. And then we added the Clover Valley improvement to the budget. And then other things, we're charging the twenty dollars an hour for room rental in here and increasing the high school contract that we already talked about briefly.
And I would, again, just on the, um, I, I would kind of put proposed or something to that language. Cause, because they haven't been approved, right?
Well, and so she has the asterisk up here, required board approval, so anything with an asterisk next to it.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you very much. Um, all right, so- All right, so... So that was our first review of the budget. Again, based on what we said about November tenth, we would expect to have a second pass at this then. Accurate, okay. The next item, mission and vision statement, that was, I just wanted to get back and report to you guys and see what we wanted to do. So I had mentioned that I had reached out to someone, and I wasn't sure how much she would be willing to do it for. So again, her name is Kathy Coffey, and she is the, she is the executive director of leaderships in Snohomish County. And she has done this sort of thing, she did it for their own board, et cetera. I, here's, here is the potential offer I made to her, and I said it was, it was based on board approval. But what I offered to her was, I said, basically said, "We don't have money, but here's what we could offer you, is, is one, a sound panel with their, a sound panel with their logo on it for a period of time, on our website, where we have, where we would have an updated mission and vision statement, give them credit for that exercise, and then taking her, hosting her for a chamber luncheon." And so, the total of those expenses would be under one hundred dollars. And I think if we felt that we couldn't even afford that, I know, Donna Sue, you had said, and I-
It's still offered.
Okay, and I, so, I think, I think, sorry, what I was trying to make sure before I said it, but I think that we could incur those expenses personally, and therefore, it would cost the district nothing. And so what, if we wanted to do that exercise with this board, it would need to be done before the twenty-fourth, and she would need some dates for that scheduling to occur.
So this is just, she'll look at the mission statement and?
Well, she will lead us through the exercise.
Lead us through the exercise, for the mission statement and?
And mission and vision, yeah.
What's her name?
Kathy Coffey.
Kathy.
Kathy Coffey.
Spill coffee for me.
Kathy, K-A-T-H-Y.
And she works for Snohomish, what?
Leadership Snohomish County. She's the executive director for leadership Snohomish County.
I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and get Ms. Coffey to come and have a session with us to come up with a vision and mission statement for the NWPRD before the twenty-fourth of November.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, so it has been, it has been moved and seconded that we, I'll use the word "contract", but it's at, it's at no fee, I mean, I hope I'm not, okay, that we employ Kathy Coffey to do a mission and vision statement prior to November twenty-fourth, based on scheduling, but again, at no cost to the district. I know I'm adding here, but at no cost to the district.
She needs to amend it to where there's no cost to the district.
So amend, and no cost to the district.
So, okay, and so it has been moved and seconded, or the amendment has been moved and seconded at no cost to the district.
And I just want to say thank you for your hard work. It's a great idea.
Is there, is there any discussion?
The only discussion I've got, I mean, if we're going to get into the panels and stuff like that, there's a lot of discussions got to go on with that. You know, we'll be putting stuff up and stuff.
I would actually, understood, however, part of it is, if what they want is simple, we are not, we are not offering that to everyone, we can offer that to them. Do you understand what I'm saying?
But I'm saying, before we do, that there's a lot of discussions got to go on to that, that's all I'm saying.
For one panel, I would, I actually would not, I don't agree that there has to be, I think it's, I think it's wise to do, but it's not a requirement.
Well, I'm saying, I will sit there and make a motion later on for it, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Now, whether it gets passed or not, that's immaterial.
Gotcha. All right, so-
I see both your points.
I think it's, I think it's wise. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you.
You disagree, I don't care.
No, but I'm, but I'm not, well, but I'm not disagreeing with you, is the thing.
I'm just saying, it's discussion, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, absolutely. Is there, no more discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we do a, so roll call?
Well, no, oh, yeah.
Yeah, because it was not unanimous.
Right.
So Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Pierce?
Aye.
So the motion passes two to one. And if we could just, can we try to sync calendars right now?
For?
Can we come up with potential good dates? She wants us to give her dates.
I can't at this time.
I really, I'll need to talk to my family, I'm a honest, I'm trying to-
Okay, can, if you could, if you could by the end of the week, if you could email me dates, there's no reason that that can't be done offline to propose something, right? It's, that's not-
Can we, do we want to do it in an evening, or do you want to do it during the day sometime?
Well, it has to be done during the evening, you know, because I work during the daytime.
I know.
Okay, so if everyone could just, if you, if you wouldn't mind sending me an email, and that way I can try to coordinate-
She needs to do it before the twenty-fourth.
Well, we, we need to.
Yeah.
If we want to do it with this person board. And so that's what we, our, that's, the motion is to try to do that, that's our-
Yeah, it needs to get started, you know, I agree with that.
Cool.
All right.
Okay, so the answer is, everyone's going to send our dates available to you?
By the end of the week. Okay.
Which is Friday?
Friday, yes, that, let's go with that, end of the week, yeah, that would be great. All right, so that is covered, legal, we, we need to-